Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Hello, welcome. If I can ask for just a minute, appreciate all of you being here tonight. Democracy in Action, I love it, and I appreciate every one of you taking time to be here with us this evening. Some of you may have been with us earlier in the evening at the work session, and I want to make the comment that people will feel one way and they will feel another way, but the significant thing to me is that we have all come together tonight to exercise what keeps democracy going, and that's people caring about their community and their neighborhoods and the life that they live right here, and I appreciate that, and I know the councilors do as well. We have a couple of kind of housekeeping rules. It is Monday night, but it's not football, as I like to say, so no cheering and no booing and no applause. And also, sometimes people bring signs, and I like to ask people to keep their signs down in case you have a sign. It's just a courtesy to everybody else, keep your signs down if you have them. And with that, I think we will begin the meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. This is the special meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem for August 26, 2013. Would the recorder please read the roll? Board Member Bennett.
Here.
Board Member Tesler.
Hi, Doc.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member Claussen.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Board Member Thomas.
Here.
Board Member Bernard.
Here.
Board Member Clem.
Here.
Chair Peterson.
Here.
Thank you. Will you join me, please, in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Member Bennett, would you please move for the approval of the special meeting agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Thomas, was it? Thank you. Member Thomas, to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We have time for public comment, but we have no one who has signed up for public comment during this session of the evening's business, which is only on the Urban Renewal Agency items. But did someone come this evening that wanted to speak during this portion? Seeing none, all right, we'll move along from there. Member Bennett, would you like to introduce resolutions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation on Resolution 4A.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member, was it, Nanki? Thank you. Is there discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I should have said, actually, that Counselor Tesler is on the telephone, and so she'll be participating this evening telephonically, I believe it is. Welcome, Counselor Tesler.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Member Bennett, back to you.
Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation on Item 5A.
It's been moved by Member Bennett, seconded by Member Nanki, to move staff recommendation on Item 5A of the action items. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. There is no further -- oh, you want to do B?
5B. Counselor Clem has a motion.
5B. Counselor Clem has a motion. Counselor Clem?
Staff recommendation. Second.
It's been moved by Member Clem and seconded by Member Bernard to move the staff recommendation for Item 3.3B. Is there any discussion?
It's 3.5B.
I'm sorry, 5B. Counselor Claussen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question for staff out of curiosity. All the talk about stormwater and rain gardens and such, and it's a $14,000 grant to build a rain garden. Is that a normal price to build a rain garden? That seems awfully expensive. Is this above normal size? I don't really know. I'm sorry to blindside you with it. It just kind of struck me a little bit earlier.
I have no idea, Counselor Claussen. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, I really would be, at this point, I'd be guessing. You know, rain gardens include plantings, include piping. I mean, they are not just a -- they're custom-made. You know, it's not just digging a quick hole. They're an engineered product, so if that gives you any ideas, but I don't know the details of this project.
Mr. Wells has some additional information. Thank you, Mr. Wells, yes.
Yes, John Wells, Urban Development Director. A part of that cost is the construction of the roof. There had to be modifications to the restroom roof as well, so part of that was the roof, which I believe has been pretty well taken care of, and the rest of it now is to get the actual rain garden. I think it was almost $3,000, maybe $4,000 for the roof.
Okay, that makes sense. That helps me out. Just thinking about our stormwater codes and revisions coming in, and rain gardens in people's yards, and so on and so forth, and if it's 14 grand to do your landscaping on a new house, that's expensive, so glad to hear there was something else in there.
Yeah, yeah. Counselor Bernard.
I was chair at the time of West Salem Urban Renewal Advisory -- or Redevelopment Advisory Board, and we had this conversation about the rain garden. I know that at the time, I had said, let's use funds for economic development, and I still kind of stand that way. I understand that the Gibson Water Creek -- Watershed Creek, whatever it is, this is their project. This is one of the things that they want to push forward with, and I think it's a good example of, well, it does cost money if you want to do these kinds of things, and this is what we're going to have to put our money towards, this amount of money on a larger scope every time we decide to do something, something like this. Great example of how much money can go towards a small project.
Right. I'd like to add a comment that I remember also being in the West Salem Urban Renewal Board's meeting when the representative from the Watershed Council presented the concept, and that did move forward through that board, and it did come to council as well. So we actually have already authorized the money. It's just that now we need to authorize the execution of the agreement to go forward. Okay, all right. Any further discussion? The motion before us is to approve staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. There's no further business to come before our Urban Renewal Agency, so this meeting is adjourned. All right, I'd like to call to order the evening's meeting. This is the meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, August 26, 2013, and would the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Tesler.
Hi, Doc.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Claussen.
Here.
Counselor Dickey.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Bernard.
Here.
Counselor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Thank you very much. All right. Counselor Bennett, would you please move for the approval of the additions, deletions, and reorganization of the agenda? This is kind of a heavy packet tonight.
It is. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda, as well as moving Item 5A ahead of subject matter for the public hearings.
Second. All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Thomas to approve the additions, the deletions, and the reorganization on the agenda. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We now have time for public comment, and we'll see who has signed up, and I should sort of make a little statement about public comment and testimony during the public hearing, because there are two different types of comment. And what we consider now at public comment is that you can talk about anything that's on the agenda other than the items under the public hearing, which you'll have time during the public hearings to talk about. So if there's anyone who wanted to talk during that session and mistakenly signed up under the public hearing, we can make changes to this as we're kind of getting into it right now. So I see first we have Wallace Reed and then Mark Shipman. So Mr. Reed, if you'll please come forward. Yes?
I had anticipated this would be later, after others' public hearings, so I'll pass if this doesn't affect you.
All right. So you would, you're saying that you would like to make your public comment in the public comment section at the end of the entire meeting?
No.
Okay.
I did not realize this was a public comment, so I will let others speak to the comment.
Okay, okay. Did you want to sign up under the public hearing?
I believe I have for the transport, for the railway transport issue.
Okay, we'll check, we'll double-check, make sure you're on there. Okay, thank you. Mr. Shipman?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. For the record, I'm Mark Shipman, Laney's Attorney with Sawfield Griggs, PC 250 Church Street, Southeast Suite 300, Salem. I'm here this evening to speak to Agenda Item 5A. In 5A, staff has recommended approval of our multiple-unit housing tax incentive application, and we agree with the staff report. I recognize that this application and the staff recommendation carries a conditional recommendation for you in that you would need to approve Item 4B on your agenda first. A no vote to 5A means no residences and no post-acute rehab facility. It means no increase of any tax revenue either to the South Waterfront Urban Renewal District or to the Downtown Riverfront Urban Renewal District. Right now, taxes on the bare ground for the residences are $5,700 per year, and taxes on the North Block portion are approximately $2,000 per year. Over the next 10 years, you have the opportunity to gain roughly $40,000 annually, starting in 2015 with the construction of the Marquee Facility, and $71,000 annually, starting in 2023 with the construction of the residences. As you know, these taxes don't flow into the general fund, but they do funnel into the South Waterfront Urban Renewal District and for the residences' property and for the Downtown Riverfront Urban Renewal District for the North Block property. They're in two separate urban renewal districts. If 5A is approved, it will allow for significant redevelopment of the Boise Cascade property. It will allow for increased property taxes, totaling approximately $110,000 per year, starting in 2023. It will allow for 118 multifamily apartment units to be built in our downtown core. As you know, Salem currently suffers from a significant gap in its multifamily housing, and these units would go a long way towards closing that gap. It will allow for a linear park connection along Pringle Creek between Riverfront Park and Commercial Street to be built. It will allow for additional development to occur on the North Block property, and it will encourage and spur other property owners in the downtown area to complete their plans to move forward with projects that are on the drawing boards. We agree with staff. Our request satisfies all of the approval criteria necessary to prove the tax abatement, and we'd urge you to move staff recommendation and adopt Resolution 2013-56 and direct staff to request from the Salem Kaiser School District that they adopt a resolution approving the tax abatement as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Shipman? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, Mark. In looking at the purpose of the Mootip, it was to allow local governments to establish a program for property tax exemptions to stimulate the construction of transit-supportive multi-unit housing. And when I looked through the public benefits and what have you in the applications, the one that wasn't checked had to do with provisions and/or programs supportive of the use of mass transit. So, albeit the criteria that we have would allow us to provide this, knowing that its original intent was for transit-friendly, can you address how it could have a transit or what the transit element is potentially?
There is a transit element, Counselor Nanki, and we actually have a letter of recommendation from Ellen Pollak of the Chariots Board for the Mootip application, essentially recommending support of it. We've been working with Chariots with respect to establishing a transit site at the Pringle Square property, and that's something that we're committed and continuing to do. So there is a, there is a direct link there to transit and particularly with the residences.
Thank you. It just seemed strange that that one box was not checked, so.
We didn't have that at the time that we submitted the applications, but we have it now, sir.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Counselor Dickey.
Thanks, and to go along with what Counselor Nanki asked, is there an actual transit component in the master plan for this, or is that something that you will be working out later?
It's actually something that we'll be working out later with Chariots, with Salem County Transit.
All right. Were there other questions from councilors? For Mr. Shipman. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no one else who wanted to discuss during this section of public hearing, public comment, I'm sorry, we'll move along to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar.
These are second, it's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Bernard to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. If you're following along on the agenda, we're moving to Item 5, Special Orders of the Gen, Special Orders of Business. I believe we have a staff report.
Good evening. I'm Clint Damron with the Urban Development Department, and I'm going to give a brief overview of what the Multi, Multiple-Unit Housing Tax Incentive Program, or Mootip, is, and again, a brief overview of the applicant's application. So what is the Mootip? It provides an abatement of property taxes for a period up to 10 years. It is authorized under ORS 307600 to ORS 307637, and is authorized also by Salem Revised Code 2.790 to 2.835. Its purpose, as stated earlier, is to, among other things, to stimulate the construction of transit-supportive multiple-unit housing in Oregon's urban centers. How does the Mootip work? The initial approval by the original taxing jurisdiction, in this case, the City of Salem, will only relieve the tax liability that the city would receive. The city generally receives every, every tax dollar, property tax dollar collected, the city receives about 21 or so percent. For the property to gain a full abatement of property taxes, an additional jurisdiction or jurisdictions totaling 51, at least 51% of that jurisdictional capability would need to also, through resolution, approve the project. In the past, that has been done with a combination of the city and the Salem Kaiser School District, which collectively represent about 60% of the voting block, if you will, of property tax inclusion. And it is also important to note that the abatement on these projects only applies to the residential portion that is being constructed and the related improvements, such as parking lots, that kind of thing. The land itself does not get tax-abated. There have been only three instances since 1976 of the City of Salem approving Mootip use. It was Willamette Landing in 1990, expired in 2000, the Forum Apartments in 1980, expiring in 1990, and Mill Bridge Terrace in 1977, expiring in 1987, and each of those was granted a 10-year exemption on their property taxes. So what requirements and criteria are there for a project to partake in the program? Generally, it must include at least two dwelling units. It must be located within a defined core area, and it must include at least one of the 19 listed public benefits. The project must be complete by January 1, 2022, and the project must demonstrate public and private access to its site. Generally, describing the Mentoview LLC application, it is for 118 apartment units ranging from studios to one, two, and three bedrooms. It includes 184 parking stalls and has 2,000 square feet of commercial space as well. You can see here in red, this is the Mootip core area with the project site highlighted, so it is obviously within the core area. Of the public benefits I mentioned earlier, there are 19 listed in the criteria. The applicant has identified 10 of those within the application as being met by the project. Site access, at this time, the site does not have public and private access to it, and that is, again, as stated earlier, a topic of a public hearing later this evening. So tonight, staff's recommendation is approval of the application by Mentoview LLC to participate in the Mootip, condition on access to the site. Also, staff recommends allowing, council allowing staff to make a request to the Salem Kaiser School District Board to approve the project and provide a full tax exemption. Thank you.
All right. Are there questions by councilors? Counselor Nanki and then Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you could, because people tend to have a difficult time understanding urban renewal versus potential for general fund from taxation, speak to the issue of the urban renewal area and how those monies are different, and how, if this were given, when the tax credits expire and when the urban renewal area expires, what will we see versus if we did nothing? And the taxation now and then? Do you understand kind of where I'm coming from?
Yes. I'm going to ask the city attorney to jump in if I misstate something. Right now, as the site is within the core area and within an urban renewal area, if it was, if there was no tax abatement, the money would flow all directly to the urban renewal area. So since that is being abated, it's not going anywhere. It's staying with the property owner, the developer. That's part one, I guess. I'm sorry.
What are the current taxes that are being paid?
Roughly, for the land only, which is all it is today, the tax bill for the entire property, the entire county, is about $19,000 a year, of which the city receives about $5,600 a year. And with or without this program, since land cannot be abated, the city will continue to collect that regardless of what is or is not built atop of it.
Okay.
What would be abated would be the value of the improvements for 10 years.
Correct. And right now, there's really nothing as far as the value of improvement.
It is an unimproved site, just land.
So there's no money that's coming to the urban renewal area from?
About $5,600.
Right. And potential?
Potential, what would be abated?
What's the term of the South Waterfront Urban Renewal Area?
I would refer to John Wells or city attorney.
John Wells, Urban Development. Are you talking about what maximum indebtedness is?
No, just when we estimate that urban renewal area will cease to exist, to kind of figure out when monies would actually come back to the general fund versus stay in the urban renewal area for improvements inside of that area.
The way the urban renewals areas are currently regulated, they're not, they don't have time dates, hard dates. They are based on their maximum indebtedness, the number of projects. I believe for South Waterfront, it's 26 million roughly of maximum indebtedness. We haven't begun to borrow or to develop using any of the funds from the, from the URA, because it hasn't had enough tax increment to pay back that borrowing. So it's in its very early stages, and it hasn't, it has not yet been tapped. So it has a capacity of up to 26 million. It hasn't started yet in regard to that.
But any tax increase due to development on this parcel would then, those dollars would roll back into the urban renewal area.
Yeah, the base, the frozen base, with the time the urban renewal area was set up, was frozen. Any new tax increment above that frozen base comes to the urban renewal area. A development on this site, if it created, or in South Waterfront, it creates new tax increment will come to the urban renewal area. The frozen base continues to flow to the existing tax jurisdictions.
Correct. But the purpose, the main purpose of this entire urban renewal area was to deal with this property and then some frontage on Commercial down to Owen, about one block in, correct?
If you recall, the Urban Land Institute study acknowledged that in order for this site to develop, it would need to be a partnership between, a public and private partnership. And the council decided about, I don't know, eight years ago, to set up the South Waterfront URA for that purpose. Due to the downturn in the economy, the tax increment hasn't, has not been there. It hasn't increased, and so the agency at this point doesn't have an ability to borrow any subsizable, any sizable debt in order to pay it back.
Thank you.
Counselor Bennett.
Let me follow up, though, on Counselor Nanki's questions, because, so, in a, in a situation like this where you do a tax abatement, would there be increment for 10 years, or does that, is that also, I mean, that is your increased value, does that exist under this abatement program then?
If the, this Mootip were approved.
Right.
The taxes on the apartment complex of which this is referring to would be abated for 10 years.
So let's stop there for just a sec, if I may. Then, that, there would be no money coming into the South Waterfront Urban Renewal District, is that?
That is correct.
Okay, so.
From this project.
From this project.
Correct.
Okay, but this is the main project.
This is the main project, so far.
So.
So this, so there is not, so what the development has requested is rather than using the urban renewal area as a funding mechanism for this project, to help assist in this project, they're asking for a tax credit instead, which is different, it's a different tool. It's a different tool than urban renewal.
I noticed on the others that were listed, Willamette Landing, the Forum, and I forget the name of the other, but I don't recall any of those being in urban renewal districts. And maybe they were, maybe Mill Bridge Terrace, I'm not familiar with.
I am not sure if they're in a URA. They're certainly within that core area, that red area that was defined.
But the urban renewal.
But I'm not, I don't believe they're within an urban renewal area. My, that would be my, but I'm not sure, Counselor.
Yeah, it just strikes me that, and tell me if I'm wrong, it would be unusual to, to abate taxes in an urban renewal area, which is based on a tax increment financing, that you're saying that, that the two are inconsistent.
Well, they're, they're two different methods or two different tools to assist development.
But I look at them, though, and they are two different tools to assist development, but put them together, they're inconsistent in their, one is for.
Yes, that's true.
I mean, I, am I understanding it right?
You're understanding correctly. The, I think the decision at this point, and what the applicant is asking for, is that right now, there is not enough tax increment in the South Waterfront URA for the city to participate in any meaningful way for the development of this site. We do not have the ability to bond or to borrow money that would assist in any of the projects that are in that South Waterfront URA plan at this time, and that will likely be for, until there is development occurring, is likely to remain, the tax increments likely remain low. And so, because they're ready to go with a development, they have asked for this other tool to be used to assist the development to go forward. But you are absolutely correct. It will not benefit the Urban Renewal Agency for the next 10 years. It will promote, you know, the first, the first amount of development in the South Waterfront.
But this, and this total development, if that's okay, Madam Mayor, if this, this total development splits between two urban renewal districts.
That's correct.
So just across the tracks, we are using downtown urban renewal funds to offer assistance relative to. relative to its adjoining tract of land. I mean, the, so we are using tax increment money to assist the developer in developing the marquee project if they go ahead with that project.
That is correct, Counselor, and that is because that the, the riverfront downtown urban renewal area has sufficient capacity to bond, to borrow, and to grant other tools to, to a development. Just across the tracks, where this apartment complex is being proposed, it doesn't have that capacity yet, and may not for several years. This development is ready to go and have therefore asked for this approach, which is another tool that would allow the development to proceed, but it is not, it is not strengthening the Urban Renewal Agency in that regard, if that's, I think.
And then just one final question. I listened with real interest to Mr. Shipman's description, rather, of what would grow out of this Mootip. I mean, it was sort of like there would be all of this economic activity, economic growth, et cetera. In fact, in the real world of urban renewal, which is what we're in here, none of that is happening. That is all the developer's decision in terms of their own market research, their own determination of their investment, their own determination of the real potential for that site. None of that grows out of any kind of, of this being decided. In fact, this restricts the growth of our urban renewal agency in that area. It lowers its, its ability to raise funds.
It does for the, certainly for the, for the next 10 years, for the short term.
Okay.
Until there's more development. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councilors and staff, I need to ask you to speak very clearly into the microphones. It's difficult for this to be picked up, both by CCTV and in the room, if we're not really focusing, so try to do that. That's why you heard some discussion in the background. It's a discussion going on between Counselor Tesler and IT people to try to improve the hearing, so try to remember to get your microphone up really close so you can get that message right there. Okay. All right, now, we have some more people on the list. Counselor Benars, then Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Clausen.
I just want to follow up on a couple of things. I'll be Tom Jones for the moment.
That's not unusual.
That's not unusual, no, no. First off, the Mootip is specifically that we had, we had, prior to this, the, the council should know, everybody in the, in the council chambers should know, that prior to this, we spent an hour looking at the master plan for the development of the Boise Cascade, former Boise Cascade site, which included not the apartment, not just the medical facility, but the whole area in totality. My question is, is the, to clarify what Counselor Bennett had talked about, the Mootip only mitigates or it only takes care of the residential units that are on the north side or northwest side of the, of the development, is that correct? It does not have to do with the office building or other, the medical facility or the other units that are planned on that site at this point?
This Mootip application that's before you tonight is addressing, is a request for the apartments.
Only for the apartments?
Only for the apartments on the west side of the river.
And not for the land?
Madam Mayor, we can't hear.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you drawing that to our attention, so we'll try to speak up. Is there any way to increase the volume on the speakers? It is not a very new system, I apologize.
We are currently working on that.
Okay, good, all right. We'll try to do better.
Again, it's, it's not on the land as well, correct?
That's correct. The land does not get abated at all. It will continue to generate the taxes that it does.
Okay.
We are only abating the improvement value of what's put on the property.
Just of the housing units on that one section, not the whole project.
Just the apartment block to the west of the railroad tracks.
Thank you. The real question that I had when I rose my hand in the first place was, had to do with the actual Salem Revised Code that was put in place back in 1976, 7.2790. And it had to do with, my question has to do with, how much of this is prescribed in law? How much of this do we have latitude or how much of this is already written down in law where we have no latitude to deny or accept? And it's all written down already within, within the scope of the, of the code.
Maybe we could defer that to the city attorney?
Dan Atchison, Assistant City Attorney. The Salem Revised Code regarding the Mootip program is largely reflective of what's already in state law. It's a state program and essentially the city adopted it. So most of the requirements that you see in the SRC are the same requirements that state law requires. One of those documents that state law requires are the standards and guidelines, which the city adopted when they first adopted the program and then recently re-adopted. So those, those can be modified to an extent, but those are the requirements that you have before you now.
So if I understand staff's report at this point, we have met the conditions as the Salem Revised Code that, that we implemented underneath the Oregon State Revised Statute 700, or 307, chapter 307, to meet what their requirements are. So what discussion issues do we need to cover, is, I guess where I'm coming from?
What the staff report recommends is that, that staff believes that the, just as you said, Counselor, that the applicant has met the eligibility requirements for the Mootip. However, there's one that they haven't met, and that is access. And so the staff report is recommending approval of it, of the, of the Mootip, conditioned on access being approved to the site.
Thank you for letting the other shoe fall.
And, and to follow up on that comment, the, the program allows the city council to approve an application, does not require it. So even if all the criteria are met, it's a discretionary decision on part of the city council whether you determine whether the public benefits are adequate compared to the, the tax incentives that are being provided.
So there is a way in on our side at that point. It's not, not just simply a matter of, does it meet criteria 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5, and we're done?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Clint, the $5,600 a year coming from this property, whether this gets approved tonight or not, or whether a development happens or not, all of that frozen tax base means that the most the city would collect into the general fund would be $5,600 a year. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'm not sure if it's going to the general fund now or the URA, but that's what the city or the URA would be collecting.
Okay.
Regardless of what was built or not built.
If I could, Madam Mayor, I just had, I think, three questions. If South Waterfront had any money, we just fired it up, so it has very little money. And given that unless this develops or something happens to it, it will likely not have money. If money were in there, in the urban renewal, South Waterfront Urban Renewal Area, if money were there, what kinds, what are the likely scenarios that a developer could come to the city for in terms of grants, toolbox, development assistant, project bonds? Help me understand that, you know, if, if Waterfront had money, what, what would we be voting on tonight instead of a tax credit?
Well, currently, what is in the urban renewal, South Waterfront Urban Renewal Plan are infrastructure improvements as projects. Projects like daylighting the creek, projects like the Bellevue intersection down here, where there were projects with access and, and pedestrian access that were put in at the URA as, the URA does not have a grant program at this time and doesn't have a loan program at this time. So unless there were a project in the plan that, that was being identified, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be funded. But that's, those are the kinds of projects that were envisioned as the partnership that the, the URA or the city would bring to this.
So if the developer builds those, daylights Pringle Creek, or that, Pringle Creek, I guess it is, and builds all those pedestrian paths and improves the parking lot and does the things that they told us about earlier today, then we would have spent money on all of that stuff?
Most likely.
When we formed the URA.
That was, that was the intent, so those are the projects in the plan.
What, how much, how much would that have been?
I, I don't, I don't know offhand.
We knew it was over a million to daylight Pringle Creek, right?
It was.
So we'd be spending a million dollars if it had money in it to daylight Pringle Creek?
Most likely.
If we started construction today. At least I remember from the last time we visited this subject in terms of Pringle Creek, so.
Well, yes, those, those are the kinds of infrastructure projects that would be done, whether or not it would be daylighting Pringle Creek. I mean, that was one of the original ideas in ULI, but, but it's infrastructure improvements.
Okay, and my last, if I could, and then I'm done, I hope. South Waterfront, if the residences are built and the acute care facility are built, you answered the question about would that sort of freeze all the money going into the South Waterfront and the, and the downtown riverfront urban renewal areas for 10 years at least associated with the South Waterfront? But if there's building all around it, if this becomes the anchor, the magnet for other improvements, those tax increments will still flow to the urban renewal area, is that correct?
And let me just be clear. The apartments are in South Waterfront. The marquee facility is in, is in Riverview, downtown Riverview. That, that one is not in South Waterfront.
Right.
But if there is other development that occurs and doesn't require, or doesn't have a Mootip associated with it, those, the intent would be that, yes, those would flow to South Water.
So money will still, if other developments happen, money will flow into the URA?
And it depends on the development. It depends on the development.
And it, the, the total cost of a 10-year abatement based on projections that staff or the developer has made?
The entire?
Is it under a million dollars?
They're projecting about $68,000 a year, so the city portion is $68,000 a year, so $680,000, $700,000, that's the foregone cost just to the city. The entire program, the entire countywide ad valorem taxes would be about $2.3 million.
Yeah, I was just hoping to maybe try to understand what that cost of daylighting Pringle Creek was, because I remember that was pretty important to us when we formed the URA, so.
I believe that was the Mason Bruce Gerard estimate, that was about $1.9 million.
To daylight Pringle Creek?
That was the daylighting and restoring the banks.
And the value of this application is approximately $700,000?
To the city, yes, correct.
I want to interject a question, and then we'll go back to the councilors who kind of in line here in the queue. But my understanding was that the daylighting of Pringle Creek is now the responsibility of the developer? They've been working on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, they have, they've taken the lead on doing that and have started that process. And I think what we saw in the video tonight, that that's going to continue and there's going to be access that is pulled along the way, primarily because the, the Urban Renewal Agency doesn't have funding at this time to, to support that effort.
So that's not something, then, that the city is going to be paying for?
No, it is not something that the city would be paying for.
Okay, I just want clarification, because we're sounding, it's sounding like we're saying the city is going to pay for the daylighting of the creek. I just wanted to be sure that we know that that's not the case.
That is not the case.
That is not the case. Okay, good, thank you, I needed that. All right, now we're back to the list. Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the line of questioning. I've got a little off-topic of what we've been asking so far. One thing I didn't understand, and it's kind of a small thing, why would Salem staff go to the school district? And why, isn't that the developer's responsibility?
No, it, it falls to the city, whatever the initial taxing jurisdiction is, to reach out to other jurisdictions to make that abatement happen.
That's part of the SRC, or is it just kind of formal, just how it happens?
Let the city attorney answer that.
Dan Atchison, Assistant City Attorney. It's, it's part of the state law requirement as well as the local code requirement.
Okay, that was the question, so that was it, thank you.
All right. Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. You have a couple of questions. One, when I was looking over some of the criteria, it talks about it being either a transit-oriented development or in a core area. Could you kind of define what core area is? I'm trying to understand what that means.
The core area is something the, the city elected to define their own core area, and as you can see up here, it's the area in red. That's the area the city chose way back when in 1976 to make its defined area as to where they would allow the Mootip to occur.
So is that, does that have any particular criteria? For example, I think of a core area, if you're living in a core area, you have access to grocery stores and, you know, all the amenities you would need, or what is it that makes it a core area?
In general, it was left up to the cities to decide, and it even said you could have your whole city be a core area. So it was really just left up to the city to determine, I think, where they wanted to focus that, to meet the goals of, you know, the program is to focus residential development into commercial areas that had an eight-to-five feel to balance it out, to make it a 24-hour type city, to not just be a, a office core.
So this doesn't have any particular, I mean, there's nothing to say, this, people have access to certain amenities, people have access to transit, pedestrian amenities, good vehicular access, so that doesn't really address that at all? It's just a, a area that was outlined 40 years ago?
It was, the general overriding theme again is just to balance out commercial areas that were eight-to-five, to interject some other nightlife and uses into those areas that are, you know, a, a one-dimensional area of town.
All right, thank you. Just a moment. Counselor Dickey, did you have any follow-up questions? Okay. Counselor Bennett?
Just a quick follow-up on Counselor Dickey. What are those boundaries? What is the, what is the eastern and northern and southern boundaries?
I can't really tell you the street names. It's defined by legal description.
I'll try to figure out if I live in the core area, that's all. I'm just looking at that. I mean, is that 17th? Do we know what that is? Or, I, I just can't tell.
Doug Rux, Assistant Director of Urban Development. Generally, the boundary is about 14th on the east, then it jogs over, goes up and picks up some of the area up, come on the northern end up off Market Street, over to the river, then back down, picks up some of the South Waterfront area, comes back around, basically the civic center, and then kind of goes around the hospital and back down to Mission and then back over to 14th again. That's general boundary.
Okay, thank you.
Any follow-up question, Counselor Bennett? Okay. I have a couple of questions, and I'd like to start with the referencing to the letter from Salem Kaiser Transit. And I just want to be very clear that this letter, although it sounds supportive of the project, this letter is not saying that it is an endorsement by Salem Kaiser Transit of the project. Is that correct, Clint?
Oh, I've not seen this letter. It just came out earlier today.
I'm sorry, the letter was introduced by the applicant. Maybe they could speak to this. It says it, it looks like an exciting project that will bring an estimated 300 residents. Salem Kaiser Transit is supportive of development that will increase the number of residents living in the downtown urban core. And the goal of downtown transit is to assist in opportunities to create vibrancy in the downtown by offering active transportation choices for residents and customers. And that they're offering to provide information about transportation options. So now I'm getting to the point of my question. What would be the transportation option for someone living at the apartments with regard to downtown transit services? Can somebody speak about that?
I would defer to the developer on that.
Okay, all right, yes. Oh, so I can't ask that question?
I'm sorry, this is not a public hearing, so the public and the applicant aren't able to speak at this point.
Oh, all right, well, I'm sorry. I appreciate your willingness, Mr. Moore, for answering, holding your hand up. Okay, all right, well, I just then will go on record as saying I, I certainly understand that Salem Kaiser Transit, though wanting to be supportive and wanting to provide information, I suppose that would be schedules and routes, they're not saying that they're going to drive a bus into that development, and they're not saying that they even have a bus that goes and stops right near that development. So I just want to point that out. Okay, the other thing I wanted to go, the other thing that I wanted to ask some questions for Clint have to do with the public benefits. And the list that's on page six of the report, staff report, I have a couple of questions on item number two, recreational facilities. Now, my understanding, these are public benefits. I'm assuming that means the public in general?
Yes.
Not the public who live at the apartments?
There is a clause in there that states they are for public, but they do not have to specifically be for the public at large in all times, but... to specifically be for the public at large in all times, but the city attorney can probably point directly to that.
But the purpose is mostly public benefit. So I was going to ask, on the recreational facilities, I see that they're offering exercise and meeting facilities. Would those be open to the public? I don't, if I wasn't living there, could I go and exercise there and use those facilities?
I don't recall exactly the exercise facility was, but they did note that the meeting facility would be open and available to the public for rental.
But the exercise facility, it doesn't say specifically?
I cannot recall.
Okay, okay. And Councillor Nanki, did you want to say something?
Just inside of the report, it mentioned that for the residents, that would be a benefit to them at no charge, but the public could join and pay for either becoming part of the exercise facility and/or to the rent rooms.
Oh, thank you, I overlooked that part. Okay, and then item three, number three, open spaces. Project will have .87 acres of open space. Could you describe for us what the open space has been described by, from the applicant, and what's going to be in that open space?
Yes, basically, it's the small courtyards and the setbacks around the apartment buildings, and then the Pringle Creek accessway on the south side.
So the Pringle Creek accessway would be something that someone not living there would have access to?
Right, that is going to connect from Commercial Street, as proposed, over to Riverfront Park, which is a design review requirement that they provide that link.
Okay, and then these little courtyards, can I go through those?
I couldn't state either way if those are public or private, but they are open space.
I see, okay, all right. Were there any other questions by councillors? All right.
A motion?
Yes, Councillor Bennett, would you please make a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the council to deny the application for tax incentives.
Second.
It's been moved by Councillor Bennett and seconded by Councillor Dickey to deny the application for the Mootip tax abatement request. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. The request, I think, for a 10-year tax exemption and the amount of the total exemption are unreasonable in light of the public benefits proposed by the applicant. I think the public benefits proposed by the applicant are insufficient in comparison to the impacts on park and traffic system by the proposed access. I don't think you can look at this alone. I think you have to look at this in its full context. The proposed access through the park, I believe it would negatively impact on this, and I'm just very concerned that linking these two together this way represents a guaranteed deterioration of public use of the park, public's access to the park, public's enjoyment of the park. And I think that ultimately, it runs absolutely counter to the intent of what urban renewal districts are all about, which is development with increment, paying for improvement. And this just says, give us the money. This doesn't say, let's have an improvement, let's have the increment, and let's make the kind of public improvements we're talking about. It's just the opposite. That's why this, I believe, has never been used in an urban renewal area. And I think that's why you see it defined as a core area, and why the money was used the way it was, was because it runs so counter to the urban renewal process. And I guess the other, I can't see just absolutely for the next 10 years hamstringing that south riverfront urban renewal area. We actually have a plan, in case no one's looked at it, and that plan includes substantial public improvements. The Meridian didn't pay its share. This would not pay its share. We just are not seeing where these new developments are stepping up and paying their share for the public improvements that were planned as part of this urban renewal process. And I think to somehow equate Mootip to urban renewal and infrastructure improvement sidewalks, whether along creeks or along streets, or assisting in other ways, is just, I think, is fallacious. And I really strongly urge you to reject this application.
Councillor Dickey?
Thank you. Yes, I will be voting in favor of the motion. Partly, I did some research on the intent of this from the legislature back in the '70s, and there have been some really interesting developments in other areas of the state that are transit-oriented, and so transit's not an afterthought. It's included as part of, it's an integral part of the design of the project. Obviously, that's not part of this project. But having, kind of reading through what the legislative intent was, where it talks about, there are other things that can be in a core area, it doesn't have to be transit-oriented specifically, although if you read through the legislation, it mentions that in almost every other paragraph. However, thinking, well, core area probably means an area where people have access to goods and services, so different communities have different levels of transit service, but if you're in maybe a smaller community or an area that maybe you don't even need transit access because things are close by, that's great. Coming here tonight and getting a better understanding of what our core area is, I'm very concerned about that, and I think that might be something we may want to revisit as a council at some point. Concerned that it doesn't really seem to have much criteria for what specifically, especially for citing housing for people. So for those reasons, I'm concerned about this, and I will not be supporting the tax credit. I think maybe if this had more transit-oriented or other alternatives, or something that showed that people living here could have access to goods and services and their work, if it's pouring down rain, it might be difficult for you to get to your job downtown or down on the Capitol Mall. So anyway, I think that this doesn't quite do it for me.
Councillor Thomas?
I'm going to be not going with this motion. I believe this project is very much needed. You know, I think about the phrase when they say, "It takes a spark to get a fire going." And if nothing's put there, and we don't approve this, or am I off track? Okay, just checking. If nothing's put there, it's just going to sit, from my understanding and from the history. We're looking at past issues, past flaws. We need to be able to move forward and look at what's in front of us right now. I think this is a very good project. I believe in this project personally and professionally. I think it's in the best interest of the community. We talk about losing tax revenues. We're going to be getting $5,600, from what I'm understanding was said earlier. This project will create much-needed jobs, whether they're temporary or permanent. It will create homes for the individuals who want nice, safe park downtown locations to access businesses downtown. It will generate revenue for businesses downtown, which is much-needed. We talked about revitalizing the nightlife downtown for individuals my age, so I'm going to speak for individuals who are in my age bracket, and other diverse groups, whether it's age, gender, or ethnic groups. They shop downtown a lot, they frequent downtown a lot, but this is, it seems to be excluding them from this whole process. And this project, I believe, targets that background, the diversity that's in this community. We're looking for a more urban and livable Salem, which is what this project is providing, from my understanding. I feel that this development would not compete with the park or the carousel. I don't think it will hurt it, quite the contrary. I believe it will enhance it. I believe it will create more parking, it will open up the creeks, it will create connectivity, which is what we're looking at for the Mental Island Bridge and the park when it comes to fruition. It will also provide more customers to downtown businesses. We had our League of Cities Conference here last year, and a lot of feedback that I heard on the buses, you know, from the individuals, was that there was not a lot of things in Salem for them to do. They would have preferred that the conference be held in Portland, which will be this year. So I would suggest that you really take a look at what's in front of us and approve this, because if we don't, who's to say somebody else is going to come along later on and want to even try to develop it because all of the slaps on the hands? It continues, and that's all I hear, is what we're looking at from the past. We have to move forward and stop looking at the mistakes from the past, but learn from them. So I will not be supporting this motion.
All right, Councillor Clausen? I am sorry, Councillor Nanki was next, and then Councillor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of issues, and I won't be supporting the motion on the floor, albeit there's 19 public benefits that we could address, they're required to provide one. And the biggest one that I see out there right now is development or redevelopment of underutilized or blighted property, and that's horrendous. The contention that it doesn't belong in an urban renewal area is belied by the fact that about half of what we consider our core area is urban renewal, if you look at that map, all the way up into north downtown as well. I just don't know if anybody really knows this. Program is out there, it's highly underutilized. You would think that there would be a much higher potential utilization on it, and I know that they're trying to make this happen, and this was something that was available for that space. To me, it meets the criteria, and fulfills something that's otherwise potentially lost. And if that sits there for another five years in an urban renewal area, there will be zero increase in property value to even start making any increment. So if we go increment or no increment, 10 years from now, what may or may not be there? Do we have anything? So that's kind of the way I look at that tax portion of it.
Okay, Councillor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting the motion on the floor. Looking at the property being within the URA, what concerns me about it is, you look at the URA and what was its intent, one of the criteria that's been placed upon the project is fulfilling at least one of the projects that's been identified for the URA. I think we, as a council, can go back and look at the URA and adjust it accordingly if one of those projects is gone and taken care of. So the money coming out of the URA, it's, you know, if I'm understanding it right, it's generally a wash to the city. Either we can collect it in the URA and spend it on a project, or we can require it of this development, and we can do this to help the development out in order to proceed forward, and then we get the project out of the result of the development. That's my understanding. I believe that that would work. And I have a question for the city attorney, just, I was conferring with my quasi-Roberts' rules competitor over here. If a negative motion fails, we have to make a decision tonight, correct? So there has to be, there would be another motion required if this failed?
If the motion on the table is to deny the application, if that motion fails, you could consider an alternative motion. If you take no action, by law, it's deemed approved. So if you made no action whatsoever...
After September 4th.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councillor Dickey, and then Councillor Benars.
I just want to make a point of clarification. This, I'm making my vote based on whether or not I think the tax credit is appropriate for the development. That is not in any way reflective of whether or not, we're not voting right now on whether we want this developer development or don't want this development, it's simply for the tax credit. So just to make that clear, so people understand, we're not voting for or against the development, just the tax credit.
All right, Councillor Benars?
I'm going to vote against the, I'll be voting against the motion as it stands. I talked a little bit about the code, whether it was Oregon revised statute in the chapter 307, or the Salem revised chapter that provided us to have the Mootip in the first place. The issue is, to me, is most of this decision is based in law, it's already there. There are some discretionary items, those 19 items, we've met 10, or they've met 10 of the 19 items, I understand that. But I think there's less discretion to us than what I think we're giving ourselves credit for. I'm also looking for some tax increment financing for the South Waterfront District and the Salem, or the Salem Downtown District, and I see this, but nothing but it being a positive thing for downtown, I really do.
Other councillor comments? I'd like to make a couple of comments myself. I'm going to be voting in favor of the motion and against the tax credits, and I have certainly great concern about the public benefit. I think there are insufficient public benefits. But greater than that, I have been speaking against taking property off the tax rolls for the last three and a half years. We are battling an uphill battle on our revenue. Revenue every year is constricted here because we do have so much public property, state, county, city, school, district. We also have seen a tremendous loss in property that would be on the tax rolls when properties in our urban, in our industrial parks have been converted to nonprofit state properties and been converted out of industrial property and into office space. We had that loss with the Fish and Wildlife in the Fairview Industrial Park. We saw then the loss on McGill Crest, which again, we created, the city created an urban renewal district. Tremendous promise, tremendous hope in that area. What do we have? We have the Social Security Administration, and now we have the Department of Veterans Affairs facility. Two major facilities that do not pay the taxes, as I believe it, or do they pay taxes while they're...
If they're in leased space, the taxes are paid.
So they are paying while they're in leased space?
That's right.
Okay, well, then I'll take that.
Oh, excuse me, John Wells, maybe you're going to correct that.
John Wells, maybe I could just clarify that. The state of Oregon pays for a leased space, no other tax, no other public entity. The federal government doesn't, nor does the city.
But the ODFNW space will be purchased, so...
That will be purchased.
That will be owned, and that will be off the tax rolls.
That is correct.
So back to my original premise, is I have a very strong commitment to speaking against property going off the tax rolls. And I do think it's important for this council to keep our eyes on how much property we have on the tax rolls and the revenue that we receive from that. So for those, that reason, I will be supporting the motion against the tax credits. Councillor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just hate the phrase "tax credits." What I really hate is not being able to do anything because there's no money in urban renewal. Is urban renewal area, that's really what it's intended for. If the Urban Renewal Fund had monies in it, we wouldn't have to be having this conversation about tax credits. But other recent developments, revitalizing downtown, had to use a whole combination of federal tax credits, historic tax credits. You just don't get redevelopment unless you use every tool available. I've been torn on this one, because I just hate tax credits. People will think, maybe some people will think that we're not going to be getting property taxes. We aren't getting any more than $5,600 a year property taxes for the next 10 years, and in the 11th year, we'll all of a sudden realize quite a bit to the urban renewal area. I will not be supporting the motion. I wish there were another tool, but it's about time. it's about time to get the, get this project kicked in gear. So, I realize we'll be voting on another issue, but I just don't know of any other tools we have, so.
Counselor Tesler, do I hear you?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I also apologize for not being there in person tonight. I'd like to say that I will be supporting this motion. I don't believe that even if this, I don't, I don't believe we're going to get any tax credit back, because I don't think anything's going to happen there. And I have plumbed leave, based on the history and the relationships that I have seen, that I do not have the confidence that this project will happen. I'm going to plead the fifth on the Fish and Wildlife Building, but I agree that taking property off the tax rolls in general is a bad idea. It's a very bad idea. And we cannot turn around and tell the citizens of this city that we're going to raise their taxes, and then turn around and hand off a tax credit to a private developer for a for-profit corporation with questionable, questionable public benefit. I have not seen anything in this proposal that makes me think that I should give a tax benefit of this magnitude to these individuals. I do not believe a fitness center and the use of a meeting room every once in a while qualifies for a tax benefit. And I feel supported by my constituency in what I'm saying tonight. And I hope the rest of you will think about this pretty seriously when it comes time to raise taxes on private citizens that struggle to make ends meet in the city. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Counselor Tesler. I saw a hand over here. Was that Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Listening to the comments from the floor, and always being one to be expedient and efficient, I would make a substitute motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second?
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Clem to approve staff recommendation. Okay. So, now we vote on that motion before we vote on the motion made by Counselor Bennett. Correct? All right. Is there discussion about your motion, Counselor Nanki?
No, Madam Mayor. Just in hearing the comments, it seemed that there were, for the tax credit purpose, a majority that was in support of that and not supporting the current motion. So, rather than voting on one, making a new motion, I thought it was more efficient to throw a substitute motion on the floor for finalization of this portion.
Okay. All right. Counselor Clem, did you want to add anything to that? All right. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Clem, to support the staff recommendation. If there's no further discussion on that, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, which would provide the tax, the 10-year tax credits to the project, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. And with the nays, please say your name so that the recorder can record that.
Bennett, nay.
Dickey, testler, nay.
Anna Peterson, nay. Okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just in regards to the clarification on the motion, that is still conditional on access being provided to the facility.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I think we'll take a very brief stretch and rest, but please don't go too far away. Have some chairs that we could bring out. Are there some chairs on the side? I'm looking to see who's around the corner there. I think we do have some chairs. I just, yeah, let's try to find a chair for everybody, so people aren't having to stand all evening or sit on the floor. And there are some seats now, open in the, in the audience, too. Okay. I really do prefer to have people in chairs, in seats, as opposed to standing in the aisles. So, if you can do that, that would be great. Thanks.
I got one here.
All right. He's got a chair right there. Okay. We're going to resume the meeting, and the item at hand now, we will go to the public hearing. We're going to go to Agenda Item 4A for the public hearing. This has to do with the Parking Management Vision and Parking Task Force Recommendations. We have a staff report. Are you ready?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Rux, welcome.
Thank you. Doug Rux, Assistant Director, Urban Development Department. Tonight is the continuation of the public hearing on the Parking Task Force Recommendations. Originally, the hearing commenced on July 22nd and was continued to August 26th to allow additional time for public comment and input to be provided to the city council. As you may remember, on July 22nd, we walked through what the original roles and responsibilities were for the Parking Task Force, and those are identified in your, in your staff report, and then summarized on the screen. But basically, those were dealing with the financial stability of the program, the future of the downtown parking district, the vibrancy of the downtown area, the current parking system, and then finally, the parking garages and the maintenance of those. Community outreach was done significantly. After the Parking Task Force completed its work, the Parking Task Force met from September of 2012 through April of 2013. That culminated with a joint work session with the city council on April 29th. In addition, there was outreach to 10 different organizations, neighborhood organizations within the community. Kind of example of those is the Scan Neighborhood, the Can Do Neighborhood, the Neighborhood Chairs meetings as well. There were five open houses that were held in June and July of this year in the downtown area to brief and inform the businesses and property owners in the downtown about what the Parking Task Force recommendations were. In your July staff report, 22nd staff report, there was a vision that was proposed. Here is a map that identifies that vision, what that area is. It's what we're identifying as the central Salem area. It has the three components that are listed below, and those are addressing the issue about a system that meets the city of Salem's business and customer needs, that pays for itself for a parking program, and that enhances the business area in the downtown. The Parking Task Force Recommendations, again, those are contained within your staff report in detail. What's on the slide is a summary. The first six are identified here. The first one, the city council already approved back in January of 2013. But in summary, what they're addressing is looking at fees and fines on an annual basis, consistent on-street system, looking at the residential permit program, 10-hour meters in a municipal lot area, and expansion of the Capitol Mall parking area. The seventh of those conditions was addressing the issue in the downtown. And effectively, what this is identifying is that, over a three-year period, use urban renewal funds to do and pay for capital expenses to maintain the parking garages in the downtown. Remember, there's a $700,000 gap on average over the upcoming five-year period. Then, to implement a paid-on-street parking system, and eventually eliminate the downtown parking district and the tax. And then finally, is to monitor that by doing an annual review through the budget process on the program. What staff is recommending is that the council adopt the Parking Management Vision, adopt all the Parking Task Force Recommendations. And then finally, the third is directing staff to proceed forward with the planning and preparation of doing this analysis and feasibility, doing paid-on-street system. But what we call one of those off-ramps is to come back in January of 2014 with that information analysis about cost and feasibility, issues of number of parking meters, and what possible parking meter types might be for you to review, and then make a decision at that point and move forward. That will end my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? No, wait a moment. No questions for staff at this point. We'll move right to the public hearing. All right. We have two people signed up, Ryan Albritton and Tim Cowan. So, if you would first, Mr. Albritton, take the podium? Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Peterson, and members of the Salem City Council. My name is Ryan Albritton. I'm here representing the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce at 1110 Commercial Street Northeast. I'm serving this year as a Salem Area Chamber of Commerce President, and I'm happy to do so. We would like to start by thanking city staff for doing an excellent job engaging the chamber in conversations on downtown parking. The presentations have been enlightening and have helped small businesses in Salem better understand the rationale for Parking Task Force Recommendations. The chamber is focused on downtown parking at two recent public policy sessions, two chamber board meetings, and one small group stakeholder meeting comprised of downtown small business owners and are also active members of the chamber. As a result of these meetings, we would like to propose the following solutions to assist the city. First one is, the Salem Area would be happy to assist the Salem City Council in setting up more focus group meetings for downtown small business owners. We feel these groups will serve a very important role in determining the best possible parking management solutions that strengthen our downtown economy. Secondly, the Salem Chamber believes research should continue on parking management options and include an evaluation of the detailed parking systems in place in comparably sized cities. And then thirdly, after thorough research has been conducted that identifies available options, the Salem Chamber would be happy to assist in communicating the various alternatives for parking management solutions to downtown small business owners, so the downtown community itself can lead the initiative for any proposed changes if they so choose. The most common remarks received to date on downtown parking have related to the ambiguity of what it would mean to implement paid-on-street parking in downtown Salem. Details relating to cost, validation programs, phased implementation, short-term fee parking, et cetera, have created more uncertainty than firm beliefs amongst stakeholders. Once details are available that provide options for consideration, we believe it will be possible to find a solution that small businesses can champion and strengthen downtown, downtown's economy at the same time. The Salem Chamber is also exploring the possibility of creating a white paper on the history of downtown parking policy decisions. In order to make the best decisions for the future, we feel we must fully understand the decisions of our past and any promises or expectations that may exist as a result of these past decisions. We thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we look forward to working with the city as we move forward in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony and your preparation. Counselor Dickey, and then Counselor Claussen.
Thanks for coming down. I just, I'm curious to know, did the chamber have a representative on the Parking Task Force?
I believe we did. Yes.
All right. Thanks.
Counselor Claussen?
Thank you, Mr. Albritton. The staff recommendation that we're looking at up here, do you think that generally fulfills some of the concerns, which are a little bit more time working with people and understanding, providing a little more clarity before council makes a decision on final implementation?
Absolutely. Yes, I think more needs to be discussed.
Okay.
Further questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Mr. Cowan?
Mayor?
Yes.
I provided written testimony in to save time. I'll just have that backed up.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And I believe, Mr. Goderba, did you, have you given it to someone just now? You mean, or it was earlier provided? Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Cowan?
I provided that when I first came in.
Oh, all right.
Just have a couple pieces, but I don't want to take them.
I just want to be certain that we all have it in hand. Mr. Cowan, I, I'm sorry. Who did you give the documents to?
The gentleman that comes in with his sign-in.
Oh, Mr. Goderba, do you have? Oh, here we are.
No, I don't have documents from you. No. You did not give me that.
Okay. Well, Mr. Cowan, maybe you would just like to go to the podium then and share with us. I apologize having to drag you to it, but want to be sure that people really do hear what you had to say. Okay.
Mayor, city council, one of the things I found when I talked to people was they really didn't know what the purpose was.
And you need to introduce yourself, I'm sorry.
Tim Cowan.
And your address, or your...
3160 Dogwood, Salem, Oregon 97302.
All right. And you have three minutes, and at the end of two, the amber light comes on. You know the drill. Okay.
I asked a couple of people downtown, and they really didn't know what the objective was. Was it to generate revenue or control parking space? One retailer that I talked to felt that they would lose as much as one-third of their business. Handicapped parking, one of the things I would like to throw out. Handicapped parking is provided for those that need special accommodations. I see no reason why someone who's handicapped is not in access to a quarter to pay for parking. Of course, you know this one is mine. I received three parking tickets when I was at the state legislature. They were, the last one was for less than 10 minutes. Each one was $30. So, combined, I shorted the city for less than an hour, or $1.50, and I was fined for 90. If the purpose is to get $15 per day, per parking meter, then probably the fine or the ticket should be no more than $15. What I will do is make sure that you have the rest of my testimony.
Yes, we have it now.
Well, you have it now? I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. No apologies.
My next one is Historic Downtown. It was created and preserved by private monies. Government was able to remove the city hall on its own. The county courthouse was also demolished and replaced by buildings that looked like the Capitol Mall. Most of the old buildings have been used for parking space. I was a manager of First Interstate Bank when the tombstone was placed where the old city hall stood. We could generate more parking money or parking space by just taking down a couple more old buildings. Customers do not use parking meters while shop less frequently. That's why, when I mentioned it was about a third of its sales. Parking meters are located around the city county courthouse, around the Capitol, and I noticed that when I came here, I parked for free. Downtown, this was, I actually talked to a couple. Picture a couple having dinner downtown, and a gentleman excuses himself to check the meter and tells the lady that we just talk too much.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cowan, your three minutes is up.
Okay, that's it.
All right. But we do have the testimony now. Thank you so much. Yes, Britta Franz? Did you want to be added to the list?
Please.
All right. Thank you. Please identify yourself and give your address.
My name is Britta Franz. I lived since 1966 at 3220 Crestview Drive South. And somebody right here knows that, because I've been here before. As you know, I attended the majority of your 14 early morning 7:30 meetings that discuss parking meters. And over the many years, I'd like to remind you, LaPointe's and Byron Franks both knew how important parking is and free parking. And as Jerry just checked in, and I checked with him, he didn't come here without putting in free parking, which we all still use. LaPointe's only came when we were able to negotiate free parking on the roof and in back half the block. I attended your meetings expecting a whole different agenda. I didn't hear information about the six different people in America that sell parking meters and their advantages and disadvantages before you chose the one that was mostly discussed, which is the Portland one, which is the worst one of all for individual shoppers. I also believe the fact that this project, so focused as the only solution to a money problem, was to put in meters, disturbed the rest of the retailing for the balance of the Christmas season. As you know, I haven't been in retailing on the street since 1988, when the recession occurred, having not much to do with the fact that we didn't have meters. And I want to warn you that before you continue so much more study, that you concentrate... And I want to warn you that before you continue so much more study, that you concentrate only on the downtown instead of discussing the whole question and then discuss and study your individual selves and interview people who understand the consumer and the customer who's coming to the spot and doing us the honor of shopping. Somewhere in those meetings, we lost that. I watched you all sincerely being there. You did not fully represent downtown. You spread out the study, which is fine, but the result upset your local income. Thank you very much. I didn't come to speak to this and I'm a little shaky because it's not my favorite subject, but you know in your hearts that people who go shopping don't have time or energy, they're going shopping. We're lucky in this economy and the future doesn't look any different between buying by mail and all that. We have to encourage the consumer. We have a money problem, that's a different problem, we can settle that five different ways, but the only way you went to was the meter question and that's where the damage was done. So I just want to alert you all that there are other ways to solve that problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm here for something else, as you may know, but I think we need to talk about that.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Franz? Counselor Clem?
Hi, Britta, thanks for coming down.
Okay, I'm a little shaky, I'm not used to this.
No, I knew your address because I used to mow your yard, but, and you always paid me, so that was good.
Yeah, right.
And I remember growing up, LaPointz was like where the gals all went.
Thank you.
So that was, it was great to have you in the downtown court. The five other ways of making money. If we rushed right to meters, can you send us an email just outlining those so that we can make sure that if we move ahead here, we don't forego looking at those?
What would you like, you mean other ways to make the money?
Yeah.
Without the meters?
Yeah.
Will you give me credit for the expense of putting in the meters? The $7,000 each one of those Portland costs, the maintenance of the technology that has to be done at city hall, the time off the person who's doing the technology and the interviewing and the replacement of training somebody at city hall? Yes, I bet you that program to put those kind of meters or any kind of meters downtown will never make the city the kind of money to just fix three. The costs will just horrendously eat you up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Yes, sir, did you wish to testify regarding parking?
Yes.
Okay, please. Identify yourself and give your address or ward and you have three minutes. The amber light comes on at the end of two and then the red light at the end of the three minutes.
Thanks very much. William Dalton, 6619 Huntington Circle, which is out in southeast Salem. So I'm one of those people that basically I leave home and I'm going to go someplace to shop, to get my coffee, to search out recreation. There isn't a lot on the south edge of Salem. So I'm a car utilizer until the bus system changed a bit, I was a bus utilizer also. I don't have the expertise of some of the folks here, but I'm really appreciative of the fact that the city is looking into alternatives. But I'm also here to, I guess it's a strong word, but to beg you to take a look at what downtown Salem means and means to us. I have two children, they grew up listening to mom and dad preach at them about not going to the outlying malls, but to go ahead and patronize our downtown businesses. Most of them are small businesses, most of them are independent businesses. I think a vital downtown is a part of what I love about living in Salem. And it always gives me a bit of a shiver when I drive by and see a large four lease or vacant space downtown. I'm a real proponent of downtown. And since I'm not an expertise, I'm just a shopper and a person who utilizes downtown, I would defer to representatives of the Chamber of Commerce. If the businesses can be made happy, then I'm going to be happy, I guess, even if it means I have to have a pocketful of quarters. I've gotten my share of tickets also, meetings that I always schedule downtown on a variety of groups and causes I participate in. You know, we do some running back and forth when we have to go to places where the meters need to be fed. But I just can't see that meters are going to help increase the vibrancy of downtown and help us keep what we just approved $2.3 million in tax credits for ostensibly to get residents to live close to downtown with a chunk of the rationale being that it would help our downtown businesses. Don't approve $2.3 million in tax credits and then make it more difficult for your people who want to come downtown. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Dalton? Alright, thank you very much, appreciate that. Alright, anyone else wanted to testify regarding parking? Then I will close the public hearing.
Questions of staff?
Oh, questions of staff first, thank you. I do rely on Mr. Nanki tremendously. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Doug, this point number three, the feasibility of paid-on-street parking, does that preclude when we study that of having free zones or first hour free or a whole variety? Give me some sort of an idea of all the flexibility that we want, options that are available to us within the context of that third recommendation.
Counselor Clem, those are things that we would look at in this process of if this was to be approved and accepted by you this evening, is to look for between now and the end of January of 2014. So it'd be looking at the finances of what equipment might cost, what are the different types of equipment are there, are possible out there. We have not selected a Portland system, we're just saying some type of new technology to be looked at. Don't know if it's a single pay and display station, if it's double-headed, there's lots of different things are out there. But specifically to your point of looking at options, we've heard, the Parking Task Force and staff, as we did open houses, listened and heard the questions about, could you do something that's free until nine o'clock in the morning? Can you have spaces on a block that maybe are 15 minutes or 30 minutes in length and so forth? And so we would look at that and put those into the model with the help of a consultant and bring that type of information back to you, which is also, is part of this process, is talking additionally with businesses, I believe, to understand what the issues and the concerns are so those can be put into that analysis in order to come back with a robust set of information for the council to look at in January of 2014.
Okay, Counselor Claussen?
Thank you, Mr. Rux, for that, that was helpful. You know, I'd see the, I would hope the tech is very consistent throughout town and where are we at on the Capitol Mall technology selection? Is that something that we have councilors at all involved in on selection or are we at that point yet?
We are not at that point yet. You, as a council, approved doing new technology in January of 2013, but there was another recommendation that came from the Parking Task Force and that's to expand the Capitol Mall area. So that's one of those that's before you this evening. We have been holding to see what that second part of that was because we get economies of scales of doing the evaluation and so forth if the Capitol Mall area is larger. If you were to approve and accept the recommendation, we are geared up to start internally with staff in the various departments with IT and finance, city manager's office, public works, planning, to start those discussions about moving that and advancing it forward. The goal is to have new technology in the Capitol Mall area up and operational in December of 2014 prior to the next regular session of the legislature.
Okay, so on that, I guess, you know, as far as parking and such goes, right now it's a pain with a pocketful of quarters, which I never have around the Capitol Mall. And, you know, the tech and its usability is a pretty big deal. I mean, will council be at all involved in that? I'm not saying I want it to come to the floor, but I don't know, I'm looking at, Counselor Bennett wondering if we want to have that discussion somehow.
The touch point in regards to that is really comes back to, in the material in attachment B of your packet, there was responses to the questions that came up last time at the July 22nd. And in that document, it identifies winter of 2013, 14, we would come back to you on the Capitol Mall with the recommendation that's before you as well as then rolling in the downtown piece. And so all of it would come back to you for a touch point in January of 2014 to look at technology.
I can say, Counselor Claussen, that we're looking at the type of technology that would use a debit or a credit card or prepaid parking card that people could purchase. We have heard from some people in the community though that they don't carry debit or credit cards and would prefer also to have an option for coins. So that's the type of information we'll be collecting from people as we look at the various ways to do this. But I cannot imagine that we would go with the technology that only uses coins.
I understand, I'm just wondering, I guess maybe in that January one, it'd be interesting to see the analysis of why the present, why the proposed piece is being proposed as opposed to the other options that are out there.
We can certainly do that.
That make sense? I think it'd be interesting to see how the analysis worked on that.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to make a note and ask Doug Rux to confirm, when the Parking Task Force did meet and did consider a number of options, we actually developed a binder that was about this thick. And we did look at, I'm just saying this to kind of refresh the councilors' memories, and we did look at various other ways of generating the money that would be required to fund the downtown parking and the downtown parking structures. We looked at the parking tax that the downtown businesses pay, we looked at other types of revenue, we looked at a variety of things. I just, it began to sound this evening like the only thing we did was to rush to parking meters and I want to confirm that that's not what we did over how many, seven, eight months of regular meetings?
Yes, the Parking Task Force looked at a variety of issues, both from the management perspective as well as the financial sustainability of the system, parking system overall. That included the downtown and the other areas that were previously shown on the map, so the north downtown, the Capitol Mall, the west Salem area, and then the area south where we're at today. Systems that were looked at, issues that were looked at, 85% rule, there's, that information is in your staff report this evening in attachment B that lays out since 2006 what's been occurring in the downtown area. Also looked at, could you expand the parking district boundaries? What would that do to revenue generation? Looked at, could you modify parking enforcement hours? What would that do? Parking Task Force found that that, if there was additional hours and there was additional citations, that would go into the general fund, doesn't go into the parking fund, so that fund was still upside down. Looked at, could you pay in the parking garages? Looked at increasing the tax for businesses downtown, a number of different models. The Parking Task Force came back with that and said it was not feasible given the percentage increases or actual, you know, whole dollars that would have to go up in order to fill that $700,000 gap. You looked at not using urban renewal funds, diminishing the level of service, going from a good condition to maybe something less than good condition for the parking garages. There was a variety of things that were that.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate that. Alright, I know that Counselor Bennett had his hand up a moment ago, so you're next and then councilors Clem and Claussen and Dickey.
Thank you very much. I see staff recommendation up here on the, on the PowerPoint presentation. I also recognize what we have within our agenda items tonight. We had polled, according to what I've seen here, staff report recommends going forward with a series, there were six recommendations, two of which they've polled out, item C and F. C was installation of a 10-hour meters in the municipal lot on State Street between High and Liberty. And the other one was the use, continued use, the issue of continuing using the issue of using urban renewal money for revitalization and maintenance of the parking structures. Both those issues were polled out of the, out of the, out of the staff report, yet up on the board, it says those things are going to be included, or at least it alludes to that. Which one gives?
And, thank you, Counselor. That was the originals staff recommendation, but as we work through the fact that we really need to look at the, study the full system in order to know the best method to go forward, we, on your additions, have a recommendation that's the same as the one on the slide here.
Okay, thank you. And then the second item that I have, if I may, I'm very good with the first and second item that we have on the PowerPoint and certainly of the four items that are within the staff recommendation. I am, at this point, a little leery of stepping forward and saying I'm committing myself to parking meters, which is alluded into item number three. Also here, an item, let's see, oh, let's see, okay, item E, it's 2E, it's expansion of Capitol Mall paid parking district. And I think everything up to this point, you've done an annual review of parking fees and fines, you've established consistent on-street parking, those all seem a good evaluation to go on. You evaluate the residential permit district program. I'm just not set forward. I would like to study the parking meters, but I wish that sentence was reworded at this point because I'm not ready at all to go down that road. I think it needs a lot more look at, just as those other three items that I mentioned are going to be, they're just looking, they're information, the research.
We're under discussion.
Counselor Bennett, did you-
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I think in order to bring this back around, I'd like to make a motion so we can have this kind of discussion rather than-
Thank you.
Okay, because this is getting-
Do we take the motion before the other people who had indicated that they wanted to make comment?
Questions for staff, this is the period for that. So if there's questions for staff, that will be appropriated before the-
So I've asked my question, which was the poll of items, item C and F, and you're saying, if I'm hearing correctly, they are being polled?
We have a different staff recommendation that's on your addition and this, the staff recommendation is what you see on the screen.
It's the yellow.
It's the yellow.
It is the same.
Okay.
Okay, okay. And then I noted that councilors Clem, Claussen and Dickey wanted to speak. Did you have questions? Do you have a question of staff? Alright, we'll do that. Counselor Clem?
Doug, I want to confirm page five of eight. I mean, I can read it, but I want to make sure that I'm reading it right. Of the two and a half million dollars it takes to run the parking program downtown, we're pulling over, just a hair over 50% of that out of the urban renewal, just to keep somebody writing out tickets for me and Mr. Cowan and others, so, and fixing the broken meters. So is that, is that what I'm seeing here?
Over half?
Yeah, what Counselor Clem was referring to is attachment A, page five of eight, that was the July 22nd staff report. And in that report, we have the 2013 budget that was identified. And so it identified what the resources were overall. And so it was a $2.7 million budget and in that year, last fiscal year, there was 1.258 million that was, came from the ripper front downtown, urban renewal district, that went to the parking garages. That was elevator repairs-
Sure.
And so forth. When we looked, when the Parking Task Force asked staff to do some modeling, looking forward in time, we took and looked at what was in the queue based upon a report we have from facilities about keeping the garages in good condition and looked at the operational expenses. Remember, last month, we were talking about there's a $200,000 operational gap and there's a half a million dollar capital gap. So as we move forward in time on an annual basis, on an average, there was a $500,000 gap in urban renewal money. At the previous council meeting, actually the agency meeting and the city council meeting, you approved a $712,000 transfer from the urban renewal fund to the general fund to pay for parking garage capital improvements this fiscal year.
So is it 1.258 million or?
Yep. No, this, that, this year it was 1.258 in 1213, 1314, it's 712,000.
Okay.
Next year's going to be a little bit less, but if you took five years and averaged it out, it came out to half a million a year.
That's the averaging thing.
Yep.
Alright, Counselor Claussen, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the staff recommendation, item three, that is to say that in January, when staff reports back, we could stop the process of paid-on-street parking in January. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the staff recommendation.
That is an off-ramp that you have based upon the information you, that we provide back to you.
Once there's more information-
And then you have a choice.
We could decide to proceed forward or stop here.
Do you proceed forward with Capitol Mall and not proceed forward downtown? Do you proceed forward with both?
Okay. That's all I needed, thank you.
Counselor Dickey?
Will you be doing further public outreach as part of number three or is that part done?
I believe that we envision doing some additional public outreach that needs to occur. The questions continue to come up about the implementation and what does that mean? We even heard this evening again, some comments about the implementation, how will it work? In order to identify a system that would work and the type of technology, I think we need to continue to talk with the businesses and customers downtown to figure out what is unique and can fit the city of Salem.
Yes. So, and I know I kind of asked this last time or I mentioned it, I'm not sure which, but- but if you do public outreach, will you be going out to the people who actually drive downtown or park downtown, as opposed to people who already live downtown and have businesses downtown, in addition to?
That's one of the things that we can look at. We've been, when we were doing the outreach, we were going to the neighborhood associations and trying to have a conversation with them and share what the Parking Task Force recommendations were. We can do more of that. I think it would be sitting down with City Manager Norris and Director Wales and kind of looking at what that might be. And we have our co-chairs from the Parking Task Force, Mayor Peterson and Councilor Bennett as well, and kind of how would that look like as we do that outreach outside of the core area into the broader community.
Yeah, we did visit many of the neighborhood associations, evening after evening, to be sure that we were carrying the message out, out into the community. Yes, Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think I might have asked this previously, but I can't find the information. How much revenue do we generate from fines generated in the downtown parking district?
I don't have fines in the downtown parking district in my head, I'm sorry. We'll have to bring that back.
If we have a shortfall, I know right now it goes into general fund, but if it's kind of this entity in and of itself, just to see what the difference in...
Do you have...
That is not a number that I have off the top of my head.
We'd have to look.
And I don't have any problem further studying this, but I would like to know what that number actually is for, somebody could email it to me here.
All right, are there further questions of staff? All right, then, we will close the public hearing and proceed to discussion among the council.
Madam Mayor.
Is there a motion, Councilor Bennett?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Dickey to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, I think we've covered an awful lot of, of material in our questions, and I, I do think that the addition of the, the change in, in setting up an informational, an information off-ramp ahead of us is, is really a good one. I think it's important that this not be something that proceeds without really, really careful thought and, and really careful consultation, and all of us know exactly what's going on. So I, I thought that was a good addition.
Okay. Other comments by councilors? I'd like to take a moment and recognize Marion County Commissioner Sam Brentano, who is here, and I appreciate so much you coming this evening, Commissioner, and appreciate your service on the Parking Task Force and the tremendous information you brought to us and the great questions you asked of us. Would you care to make any comments this evening?
Probably not. Is there a good way to say that? I already feel that we tried to address the things that came before us and, and a solution. I note the change this evening, and there's always a good opportunity to look in it further and see what those impacts were. The same impacts that I even warned about before what I thought was our last meeting. But perhaps we'll have some more and address this problem. So I really, I do, if I can, ask that you do support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, we really did appreciate your diligent attendance and participation in the task force, as we did appreciate those other individuals from the community and from the downtown businesses that served on the task force and still are on, on our task force. All right, so, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Commissioner Brentano spoke to it, it was great.
Yes, all right, thank you. All right, we will proceed, we will proceed to the, to the motion. I'm going to ask Councilor Bennett, would you please just repeat your motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor of the staff recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, our next public hearing is item B, the proposed vehicular, pedestrian, and alternate fire access to the residences at Riverfront Park. And I believe that we have a staff report.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
I have an introduction as well.
Oh, thank you very much.
This is them?
Are you ready for that now?
Yes, yes.
All right, proceed.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the proposed vehicular, pedestrian, and alternate fire access to the residences at Riverfront Park.
All right, the public hearing is open, and we have a staff report. Good evening, Mr. Fernandez.
Good evening, Mayor. City Councilor Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. What I have for you tonight is just a very brief presentation so that you and the council and the folks here in the audience can, can all be on the same page as to what's being proposed and, and what, what is before you tonight. I want to start by just orienting you once again to the project. This is Riverfront Park here, Front Street, the Center Street Bridge, Carousel. This is the, the resident, the proposed residences at Riverfront Park, a little over three acres. And then this is State Street, and our entrance to the south parking lot is here. The proposal before you tonight is reconfiguration of the south parking lot here to allow for access from the State Street signal. This is Front Street once again, this is the Carousel building here. And the proposal, as it's before you, would be to have vehicles enter and exit through a new two-way private driveway here, and then the parking lot would be reconfigured by removing the existing planted median and reconfigured into this, this configuration here. I want to be clear that the site, as it is laid out here, and as you've seen in, in other materials, holds a site plan approval. So that is not before you tonight. The way the, the buildings are laid out, the way the parking lot is laid out is already decided, and those appeal periods are passed. So what's before you really is just this reconfiguration here and this, this access portion here. The other portion that's before you is the site, because of the railroad, the Riverfront Northern Santa Fe Railroad, which is operated by Portland and Western Railroad, because that has the potential to block this access, there's a requirement for alternate fire access. Alternate fire access can be achieved off of Water Street, which is off of the map here. And then you see the dotted line where fire companies could come down the north parking lot, the north entrance to the park, and then via the walkways along the east side of the park, and then onto the parking lot and, and inside, and I'll talk a little bit more about how that would work. I will say that today, the walkways along some portions of the park are reinforced to allow for trucking because we do use this park for events, and so things like concerts and carnivals and the like do use some of these, some of these pedestrian walkways today to access the park for, for events. Okay, so just some issues and consideration. We provided you with an extensive staff report where we laid out all of this information, but I just want to go over it real briefly. The first thing is that the applicant did submit a traffic impact analysis. The traffic impact analysis shows that the 118 apartments and the small amount of, of other retail and non-residential uses will generate 950 new trips per day, so about half in, half out. About 59 of those will be during the evening peak hour. The applicant did study the operation of the signal, and their traffic engineers state that the signal will operate within our accepted standards, and we agree with that, with that finding. The applicant also looked at the queues, that there will be some queuing inside of the park in the evening peak hour. The estimated, the estimate is that it'll be about 100 feet from the signal back until the signal cycles, and that is, is exited. With respect to the fire access, the concrete would need to be reinforced to accept fire engines and fire apparatus along that. At some point within that, those eastern walkways, there would have to be a 20-foot width so that apparatus could pass each other at, by, by 100-foot length. So if, if access is approved tonight, that is one of the items that we have to talk about is exactly where that would go. The other issue is, because this is an events park, the, that walkway would have to be managed during events to either be able to clear it quickly or leave it open during events. So any kind of internal fencing would most likely have to be installed on the west side of that walkway so that fire apparatus could access the, the apartments in the event of an emergency that would happen during an event and that the entrance at State Street were blocked by a, by a train. There is a small land donation that's proposed, and I'm going to back up here so that you can see it, and, this way. So there is a, this piece right here is proposed to be donated to the city, and that donation would include some parking spaces and then the relocation of the utility shed, the, the small shops operation that we run here for the equipment that's used to maintain the park. I don't have a number for you to how much land that is, but it does include some additional parking, and that information is listed in, in fact, in finding number four. The current south parking lot has 72 parking spaces, 70 are standard spaces and two are ADA accessible. The redesign, the proposed redesign of the south parking lot would provide for 78 parking spaces. Forty-one of those would be standard spaces, 33 would be compact, and four would be ADA. And I just comment that typically we do not provide compact spaces in parks, they're usually all standard spaces for, for ease of access into our facilities. One of the things that we don't have for you tonight is a land appraisal. That's being worked on, it'll be ready next week, we believe. There is a methodology called a yellow book methodology, and that's required when you're going to enter a federal process. The federal process is the next one on the list, which relates to doing a, a land and water conservation 6F conversion. So, so the, there was some, some desire to understand what the value of that land is, of what those easements are for assessment, given that it would be turned into private use. But also then, if we're, if we proceed, the park is under a land and water conservation encumbrance, it's called a 6F encumbrance. It was something that was the original three acres, I don't want to get into, don't want to bog us down, but this, this property down here where the amphitheater and the Eco Earth is, was converted back in the late 1980s because we continued farming Minto Ground Park, which had been acquired in 1970 with land and water conservation funds. No final map had ever been created of this boundary. So as, as part of the, of doing the research for this, this proposal, we, we figured that, we, we found out that this was the case, that no final map had been done, and both state parks and National Park Service said, we need to do a final determination. That final, that delayed our process a little bit to coming to council. What we are hearing from National Park Service is that the entire 22 acres of Riverfront Park will be encumbered. That is simply because to provide a permanent recreational value for these three acres, access and parking all have to be a part of that, so that's what the determination is coming for. This, turning this into a private access way for the property would require a conversion because the 6F encumbrance does not allow private use of 6F encumbered lands. That could be exchanged for other properties, perhaps this walkway out here being turned into a, a public way. Our understanding from National Park Service is that it's a relatively simple process. However, we're also hearing that as part of the simplified process for a small conversion, it also has to be a non-controversial process. Given the number of people in the room, we may not be able to meet that test of non, of a lack of controversy. It doesn't mean that it is, it is still possible, it just requires more process that the National Park Service will require. And then finally, we did not have a formal meeting of the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Because of this encumbrance issue and wanting to get to the council as quickly as possible, this issue landed in between meetings of the Sprab Board. However, Sprab, we did poll the members, and there was a, a unanimity?
Six out of eight.
Six out of eight were, were polled and recommend denial, and I think that's in your materials in the supplemental staff report that was provided to you. So I think with that, this is one that there is no staff recommendation. We have laid out the issues for the council to consider, and it's actually a very simple decision tonight whether to either allow the access to Riverfront Park, including the alternate fire access, or not allow it. If council chooses to allow, then there are a number of issues that we need to discuss with the applicant, and those are listed here. So we would ask that if you do choose to allow, that you then direct staff to enter into discussions with the applicant about these items here. And with that, I will be happy to sit down and then take questions from you after people speak.
All right, we'll move now to the public hearing section and look at who's on the list. It's a multi-page list, so everyone, prepare yourselves. And it, just so we kind of try to speed the process up a little bit, I'll draw, I'll announce two or three names at a time, and I ask people to position yourself so you're ready to get up to the microphone, and maybe we can kind of move along a little more quickly rather than waiting in your seat until your name is called and then finding your way to the podium. Let's try to snap this up a little bit, because we do have tremendous public comment here, three and a half pages. All right, and you are?
Hi, Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Aaron Turpining with CB2 Architects, 500 Liberty Street.
All right, thank you.
Across the street here. All right, I, I think I have a fairly easy job tonight. I'm going to be playing a video animation that shows the Mountain West's vision for the entire, entire development, entire Pringle Square development. Let me get that queued up.
Okay, and you have three minutes.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Everyone testifying will have three minutes for this type of public hearing.
All right, I'm going to have to talk a little quickly.
Okay.
All right, so this video is flying from the northwest, coming down into the park. Right in front of you is the playground, and behind it, the proposed residences at Riverfront Park. We're going to come down to eye level here on the existing pathway, and we're moving to the south in Riverfront Park. To your right is the amphitheater, to your left, the residences. And now we're sweeping out, starting to look east, and we're moving south. We're coming to where the future landing of the Minto Island Bridge is, and there's the Eco Ball. And now we're coming over Pringle Creek, where we have a new pedestrian pathway that connects to the Mill Race. On your right, you would see what we've called the South Block, and on your left, the North Block Office Building and the Marquee Rehab Facility. Now we're going to cut to a view coming down Front Street from the north headed south, and we're going to come down to eye level. Right in front of you here is the Marquee Acute Rehab Facility, and we're on Front Street, moving southeast, and this is the North Block Office Building. We're going to come around the corner onto Commercial Street, head south, and here you can see the creek restoration again, and the pedestrian pathways, and then the South Block, residences there on top of the former Boise Cascade Facility. You can see the street treatment with onings, landscaping, et cetera. Now the south side of the development, you can see this extensive roof terrace here with all kinds of amenities for the residences there. And now we're moving out over the slough parcel. This last clip is going to move in over the carousel and land right where State Street comes in, and then we're going to drive... comes in, and then we're going to drive into the proposed access road. So to your right would be the reworked parking for the carousel. And here where we're driving is the proposed access road with pedestrian walkway, landscape buffer, and a four-foot tall fence. And so we're moving south on the access road towards the entrance to the, to the residences at Riverfront. And you can see here, as we come in close, there's the 2,000 square feet of retail space there on the ground floor. And with that, thank you.
All right, your three minutes is up. Thank you. Are there questions by counselors? Counselor Dickey?
I'm not sure if you're the right person to ask, but you can just tell me if you're not. I'm curious to know what the distance is from, that last clip you showed from the entrance where you would drive in near the carousel to your apartment. Do you know what that distance is on that road?
I don't. I'm going to have to defer to the rest of the design team on specifics. Yeah.
I have a question. If you could back up to the beginning of the access onto that road, and your words were that you can see the walkway, the road from State Street.
Oh, right.
Coming in.
Right. Okay, just a second, let's see. There's a pedestrian path right here.
Oh, the pedestrian path is on the parking lot side of the landscaping. Okay, I understand now, thanks. Okay, other questions? Counselor Bernard.
If I got this right, I noticed there's no sidewalk along the road that goes into the residential units at all, period, none. Nobody's supposed to be there. Is that right?
Yeah, again, I'll defer to the design team on the specifics.
Okay. So that's a question we have to hold till somebody else comes up that can answer that question. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions from counselors, from Mr. Turpining?
Yes, good job.
All right. Thank you very much. And we have Robin Chard, and then Marcus Jones, and Lloyd Hill.
I have Robin Chard, Hill Architects, Westland. See if I can get the right presentation up here. What do we got for, let me drive. There we go. Thank you so much. I heard the need for brevity, so I'm going to try to just go through the high points of this and see if we can get through it in less than three hours out. We've got a group here. So I'd like to review the zoning and development standards that apply to the residences at Remember my navigation here, and we'll, pardon me for a second here, and we'll go through this as well as I can. You know, the intent and purpose of the SWMU zone is to further economic development and to support the creation of a vibrant downtown within the city of Salem. The code goes on to clarify that the SWMU zone is intended to strike an appropriate balance between clarity and flexibility, and to promote a mix of land uses to link with and support existing downtown and waterfront uses. The SWMU zone, zoning regulations are structured to support creation of an urban environment including the following development standards. There's no maximum height for buildings within the SWMU zone. There's no minimum lot size required for lots within the SWMU zone. There are no maximum lot coverage requirements of lots or parcels in the SWMU zone. There are no minimum front, side, or rear yard setbacks for buildings or structure. In conclusion, the Residence at Riverfront Park project has been designed to be consistent with the intent and purpose of the SWMU zone. The mix of uses is consistent with SWMU zone requirements. The project complies with all the zoning regulations and standards, and the land use application has been approved with no variances. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from counselors? Counselor Bennett?
Just one, I'm not sure if you can help me on this. Could you tell me the setback from the park on this? Just, I'm just curious.
On the park side?
Yeah.
It varies, and.
From zero to 10?
Zero to, yeah, more, well, considered to be more than 10 in some places, but it, as you can tell by that, it zigzags, the wall line zigzags, so it's not, it's not a.
All I'm asking is zero to what? What's the deepest point? Do you remember?
Yeah, there's probably part of it that's probably 60 or 80 feet.
Okay.
On the southwest corner, it opens up to the Eco Ball. It's quite a ways back there.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
Other counselors with questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lloyd Hill, and then Scott Manser.
Madam Mayor, I'm Marcus Jones. I should have been following Robin.
I'm sorry, yes.
That's fine.
Thanks.
Good evening, counselors and Madam Mayor. Again, I'm Marcus Jones. I'm with Hill Architects, and we are the designers of the residences at Riverfront Park. I would like to review with you the South Waterfront Mixed Use Design Guidelines and Standards, which apply to this project. In the interest of time, I would like to hit some key points. The guidelines and standards promote using no setback and public open spaces such as Riverfront Park, including provisions that encourage buildings that create well-defined edges to the public realm, and buildings and primary building entries that are oriented to and easily accessible from sidewalks and open public spaces. Guidelines and standards also encourage park-facing ground-floor housing similar to the design of the residences at Riverfront Park. In fact, one design standard includes a requirement to provide commercial and/or residential use along a minimum of 70% of the park-facing ground floor. The design for the residences at Riverfront Park is in compliance with the requirements in the City of Salem Development and Design Handbook, including the guidelines and standards in Section 9, specifically intended for the South Waterfront Mixed Use Zone. Design review application for the project has been approved with no variances to the design guidelines and standards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions by counselors? Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I am just curious how this relates to the topic this evening, which is really the access. I'm a little concerned we're going to have a team on maybe both sides coming up talking about everything but the issue at hand, which is access. So I'm a little concerned, I'm listening to a debate or a discussion of design review and all this. This is all done. This is all done. The issue is access, and I hope as people testify, we'll start hearing about access and less about how the apartments look. It's inappropriate, and you all are professionals and should know better.
All right, other questions or comments?
Thank you. I'd like to make a little comment on that. You know, I think all of our time is precious, and we want to hear about the issue at hand. Design review is very far up in the future, and I think there's some assumptions being made by even talking about that at this point. Thank you.
Okay. All right, other comments? All right, we'll proceed. The next person signed up is Lloyd Hill, then Scott Manser, and Brad Coy.
Yes, my name is Lloyd Hill, 961 Willamette Falls Drive, Westland, Oregon. We're the architects for the project, and with all due respect, Counselor Bennett, we're going to make a presentation of the look and feel of the project as we think it has bearing. You know, what project would be allowed to proceed if access is granted? So I'm going to make a brief presentation showing images of the project and answer your questions regarding the design, including the access. You're familiar with this view from, watercolor of the view. We've generated a 3D computer model which allows us, go ahead, pan the, go ahead, Ron. Which allows us to generate a number of other views which you have not seen before, showing the look and feel of things. This is a view generated from the entrance to the carousel parking lot. Is the, is the pen not working?
Pen not working.
All right, well, it'll be more brief. The next slide is showing a view of the entry drive, about halfway down the entry drive. You can see the fence, you can see the access between, at the sidewalk, between the drive and the, and the parking. One of the comments made was there's no sidewalk for the residences at Riverfront Park. That sidewalk along the parking lot is intended to serve both the parking lot as well as residences at Riverfront Park if they need to walk from the project up north. Next slide. This is a view at the entrance to the project. You notice the ground floor retail and cafe here. There's a tower element which provides an iconic view, sort of a landmark at the entrance to the project. Next slide. You know, this is a watercolor rendering showing more or less the same scene. Our goal as architects here is to have a project design which, if you're new to town and you haven't seen it before, next slide, you might wonder if it's a new project or if it's a project which has been around town for a long time. Next slide.
Excuse me, can you speak up? People are having difficulty hearing you.
Yes.
Sorry.
This is a view from the parking area on the inside of the project. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Here's a view adjacent to the entrance to the playground. Next slide. A view from the walk in the Riverfront Park. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. This is the access between the buildings out to Riverfront Park. Next slide. In this location, the buildings are set back over 100 feet from the park boundary. This is the courtyard adjacent to the Eco Ball. Next slide. And this is the south end of the property, looking, the fence on the right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hill, your five minutes is up.
That's the last.
Your three minutes is up, actually. That's up too.
That's the last slide.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to interject. We have heard two counselors speak to the issue that we are here to talk about the access, the question of access. We spent time with your team at 5:00. We came early to provide that time for you and for us. And this evening now, we're having an entire review of your entire project, and I would like to go on record, and as the presiding officer, to direct anyone else who has signed up tonight on this list to please confine your comments to access. We are not interested in diagrams that show various parts of the project because we've already looked at those this evening. We want you on point and on task. Anything less than that, and you will not be testifying. Because the testimony now has to do with access. Okay?
Thank you for that segue, Mayor.
Thank you.
Scott Manser with DKS Associates. My office is in downtown Salem, 117 Commercial Street, southeast, Suite 310. My office is about a block from the carousel. And I've been doing traffic engineering for about 16 years, and designed a lot of schools and parks, and pedestrian safety is something that I take very seriously. So what I'm going to be talking about to you is about access in the site plan and how this provides, it's going to provide safe access to both the apartment complex and the carousel and park. So the first thing, when we, when I first got ahold of this site plan, we've made many changes to improve the safety of the site circulation, one of which is providing a separate local access road to the apartments. By separating that traffic, there's a separated parking access, parking lot for the park that will separate the motor vehicle traffic with the apartment with pedestrians. Furthermore, we've provided a landscape buffer and a fence to provide as a barrier for children and people crossing over into that local access road. So those are a couple of the key components. Another thing is the curvature of the road, as well as narrow. We've recommended a 20-foot roadway to keep the road very narrow, to keep speeds very slow. Slower speeds is one of the key things to improving pedestrian safety and reducing collisions and accidents, which we don't foresee happening with this site plan. One of the things we've also provided in the redesign parking area is to provide a drop-off, a clear drop-off area to get traffic out of the throat of the traffic signal. We've also provided crosswalks with rumble strips, again, to slow traffic at the pedestrian crossing points. Again, by providing the separate driveway aisle or local access road, we've divided the conflict points between pedestrians. There's no need for pedestrians to cross this local access road. There's a full sidewalk, I lost my cursor here, there's a full sidewalk along here that connects up to all the park uses in the parking area. There's also a sidewalk on the east side of the parking lot that connects up both their provisions and connectivity for pedestrians. And then just in conclusion, again, this current design places a high priority on safety, again, separating the motor vehicle traffic from the pedestrians. It's consistent with numerous other elementary schools in Salem, where you have a local access road providing motor vehicle traffic, and then you have a parking lot that has got a safe design that, again, bifurcates the motor vehicle traffic and the pedestrian traffic. Again, this, the local access road will provide better access to the State Street signal. By providing this local access road, you no longer have parking maneuvers that are affecting the driving movements at the traffic signal. This also addresses the operational and safety needs. As Mr. Fernandez said early on, this meets all the city's standards. City staff has reviewed this and has concurred with our findings that the site plan and operations are safe and meet your current standards. And with that, I'll open it up for questions. I will say that my, one thing I wanted to answer Counselor Dickey's earlier question, that distance between the traffic signal to the internal area in the parking lot is about 450 feet.
Counselor Dickey, did you have further questions? Okay, all right, thank you. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Scott, the.
Do you want me to go back to the?
Yeah, if you would. We've received comments concerned about children's safety, family's safety at the carousel parking lot. The description in some of those is that we're putting residences' traffic through the carousel parking lot. This, in your expert opinion, or I guess as a consultant, would you characterize this as going through the carousel parking lot?
It'd be going around the carousel parking lot.
And safety of children and families using the park and the carousel parking lot. Is it enhanced by this design? Because the spots now are straight in, aren't they? And there's no pickoff point, so.
Right, yeah.
Drop-off point.
Yeah, so especially from the standpoint, there isn't a drop-off, so you do get some drop-offs in the throat area. And by this, we're moving that traffic away from the signal and getting it, with that local access road, again, you've got better flow, better movement, where the cars also don't have to worry about children crossing through, through the parking lot area.
Because right now, the circle is.
It's circular, correct.
It goes both directions. Under this scheme, the circle only goes one direction.
Correct, so the parking lot just comes through and it's just a circle today. There's no local access road. And that's why I was saying, that's why the traffic signal was actually going to work better under this alternative, because you're not going to have parking maneuvers keeping traffic that wants to flow in and out of the traffic signal.
All right, Counselor Bennett?
Could you tell me on that first turn, that first curve, is that designed then for buses? Is that part of the transit-related planning? I mean, would a full-size bus or a shorter-size bus, whatever it would take, would they be able to use that turn to get into the parking lot in order to fulfill Mr. Shipman's suggestion that they now have a transit plan?
Yeah. The curvature that's provided there, it works for a bus.
Full-size?
Yes.
Don't know.
By a standard transit bus.
Okay.
Yeah, school bus.
And the drop-off point, who's getting, dropping off who? Who are you dropping off? I'm not sure I understand the drop-off point.
Well, this, this area right here is just the area, if you're coming in, and say you're late for a birthday party, or you're, you want to drop off, it allows parents to pull in here, pull to the side, drop off kids, and then park.
Drop off kids and then park?
Or parents, or whoever.
Okay. And then are you, did you draw the smaller, is it your shop that drew the compact? And then, are you, did you draw the smaller, is it your shop that drew the compact parking slots?
No.
No?
Yeah, we evaluated the circulation and, and the turn movements.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you.
And the safety, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions by councilors? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Brad Coy and then Jan Bayless.
Yes, my name is Brad Coy. I also work for DKS Associates at 117 Commercial Street Northeast, Suite 310, which is a...
Can you please speak up?
Yeah, it's a block away also from, from this site. My family does frequent this, this location, and as a traffic engineer, this is a, a project that I've been long looking forward to having a good-looking development here at this location. The thing that I would like to speak on is how this access, local access, drive to the side of a parking lot is very similar to how a lot of elementary schools have been built in the Salem area. This is Sumter Elementary School, it's south of Cooper Boulevard, between Liberty and Commercial Street. As you see with Rockwood Street, there is a street that, that provides access to, to houses, to residences, and it has a small access road with some diagonal parking that provides for parents, I'm sure that many parents drop off their children, for school teachers, and those using the park as well. The next example is Myers Elementary School. This is located in West Salem. This, north is down, by the way, but on both sides of the street, you have, or both sides of the school, you have a very similar design, where you have a local access. We have a, a local street that has residences, that has an access route to, in these instances, you can see some are one-way streets where parents can pull in and park, drop kids off. Fay Wright Elementary School is also in South Salem, south of Madrona, and this north is to the, to the left, and it also has a very similar access route where you would pull in and drive and be able to pull out. So this is a very common sort of design that facilitates parents dropping off kids, parents going to the park. We feel that it's very safe for, for the, for those that are going to be visiting the park to have a very similar design. The other thing that I would like to speak on is the, the amount of traffic that we would estimate to be using the carousel driveway. We did traffic counts of the current carousel and park traffic, and we did it both for a weekday and a Saturday at the beginning of the summer, as activity would be picking up for summer use. About 1,280 daily trips on the weekday, and that's a Friday, so that's a high weekday, and 1,950, you can see that Saturday is a busier day. Both of these were sunny days. The development, as it was currently, as it was initially proposed, generated upwards of 2,000 trips. With this current proposal, it's down to 950 and 900, and this traffic would, would not go through the carousel parking lot, but would use the access drive.
Okay, thank you. Your five minutes is up. Are there questions from counselor? All right, it's three minutes. I don't know why I'm saying five. Counselor Dickey.
Yeah, I do have a question. Thanks for coming down. I'm curious on the traffic counts for the proposed development, does that, do you calculate those the same way for a similar development that would be outside of your downtown area where people would be less inclined to use alternative modes of transportation? Or is this calculated assuming that because it's closer to some amenities that people would be using alternative transportation?
We, we often try to take into account nearby uses as best as we can. In this instance, we thought it was more appropriate to be more conservative. This actually takes a suburban apartment that's not even in a downtown core and uses those numbers. I would estimate that that number would drop probably into about the 650 range if you, if you did a downtown urban population, that you assume that they would be taking more transit and walking to nearby uses.
Okay, other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jan Bayless and then Scott Miller.
Hello, I'm Jan Bayless, P.O. Box 7391, Salem, Oregon, 97303. When this park was developed, I was your Salem Fire Marshal, and we went through the same issue about fire department access and the train tracks. We even got into a study, I think Peter will remember, of putting an underpass to accommodate fire trucks. We backed off, the fire department did, to go with smaller vehicles, the grass rigs, as we call them, just to get through it. But because of slope, utilities, and cost, that never materialized, so the city bought off on the railroad crossing and access from Water Street. What Peter Hernandez showed you tonight is what the team has worked out with the fire department. When I was onboard, the access had to be 20 feet. So right now, the fire department access with the removable ballards, you come off the, into the street and you make a loop just before you get to the amphitheater and circle back. We didn't make them do everything, just up the surface of that loop. I don't think I've ever heard of a call down there, but it already has been approved in, in the beginning phases of this complex, of this park, to be fire department access. What I see what the fire department and the team have done is enhanced it with the turnouts that are now required, which were not then, and to answer your question about the turn of the, it will accommodate a fire truck, the large one, so if it, it'll do that, it'll do a bus by no problem. Your fire department's making sure all access turning radiuses and heights are being met. You have any questions?
Any questions by councilors? No, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down. Scott Miller, followed by Mark Shipman, and then Barb Haackrash. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Mayor, we've asked Mr. Miller to bypass his testimony. Mr. Miller is the Site Director for Marquee Companies, and we don't want to offend you or anyone else on the council with respect to this hearing. This is a legislative matter. There is no criteria that applies to the access request. It's solely a policy decision that's up to, up to the council. There are several people here in attendance that want to testify on this matter, and, and I think it's important to the community with respect to that, because if you allow access, the project goes through. If you don't allow access, we fold up the tent and go home. We don't have any more professionals that'll be speaking with respect to design, but there are a lot that want to speak with respect to the cost of not allowing access. And so I'm not sure where that boundary is, and my, again, my intention is not to offend you or anyone in the council. My goal tonight was to speak briefly with respect to community benefits on this, because that has a direct impact on not allowing access. In this case, there are important property tax impacts by allowing access versus not allowing access, as identified on the PowerPoint there. Same goes for jobs and construction. Our architects have, have come up with a design that does, that provides a safe drop-off area for carousel users, which ties in with access. There's an improvement, in our opinion, with respect to circulation improvements for the south parking area, as well as improvement of the secondary fire access, which is already there. There already is a fire access there. Benefits to downtown Salem are also extremely important. We're doubling the number of housing adjacent to the downtown core. Residents are able to walk and bike to downtown and spend there. As noted early, we believe this is a catalyst for, for the development. What are the benefits to the park? We believe that there are some benefits to the park that are identified up there as far as additional parking spaces, retail space to serve the park and carousel, and the new park maintenance area. Community benefits are extremely important with respect to either granting or not granting access in this case, the construction of the pathway along the creek. It's identified actually in the new Salem Parks Plan as Linear Park Number Two. And what's interesting, I did not see a cost estimate in there. I've heard cost estimates tonight of over $2 million. Our estimate for doing, doing part of the work is, is over $900,000, so it's a significant Other potential benefits, this would provide an opportunity for enhanced art walk through a partnership with Oregon Series Artist Foundation. In conclusion, what we're asking for is for 24-foot access easement along the eastern edge of the, of the park there. And I realize this is an unusual request, but frankly, this has unique and unusual benefits that benefit our community greatly, that you don't find in normal developments of this type. And we believe that those benefits more than outweigh converting a 24-stripped, 24-foot strip on the easterly edge of a city park currently used for landscaping and parking to an accessway with landscaping that will serve both the Minto View property and the South Riverfront parking lot. And we respect for the request that you approve our access request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Shipman? All right, thank you very much. Scott Miller, what happened to Mr. Miller?
He...
Did he decide not to testify?
He did.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. And Barb, help me with your last name, please.
Sure. It's Haackrash.
Haackrash, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I am here tonight representing the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce. I am the president-elect for the next year, and my name once again was Barbara Haackrash with the council, or the chamber residing at 1110 Commercial Street Southeast. My comments tonight represent the chamber's recommendation on the decision before you, granting access to the residents at Riverfront, through the Riverfront Park property. There are plenty of reasons for us to feel good about the new projects proposed for Salem's vacant riverfront land. The most important for the chamber is the positive economic impact to the community of this project and the marquee development. The numbers you've seen before, but here they are again from the Eco Northwest Economic Impact Report. Construction impact, 400 and, or, excuse me, $41 million and 338 jobs. The ongoing impact, $17.7 million annually, supporting 190 jobs. The total 10-year impact, nearly $220 million and 190 jobs annually, plus the 388 construction jobs that will come along with the project. Property taxes, $110,000 annually, starting in 2023. If these projects do not move forward, we get $77,000 in total property taxes for the next 10 years. That's about $7,700 a year. We've heard $5,600 a year, so that might even have been over-optimistic there. And no jobs, as compared to $220 million and 190 jobs. Now, we recognize that these funds do not flow directly into the general fund, that they'll continue to flow into the Urban Renewal Agency, and will be able to be used for spurring additional economic activity in the southwest, or the south waterfront urban renewal area. The bottom line, this is an economic benefit to our community and the overriding factor that should compel you to move ahead. We know how urgently our community needs these jobs and the economic boost. Second, we believe the domino effect in this project will have not, will have not only on the rest of the development of the Boise Cascade property, but in downtown Salem as well. This project will be an economic shot in the arm which our downtown sorely needs at this time. We hope you will join the Salem Chamber Board of Directors in showing your support for the project and approving the request for the access to the site from Front Street. Thank you for your opportunity, for our, the opportunity to express the views from the chamber. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and testifying. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Dickey.
Yeah, could you say again how many jobs this would create? Not construction jobs, but just kind of ongoing jobs? Because I thought at the work session earlier, that question was asked, and someone said about 80 jobs, so I, and I think you had a number that was much higher.
The number I've got is from the Eco Northwest Economic Impact Report, and it's showing supporting 190 jobs annually.
Okay, thanks. Other questions? All right, thank you very much. The next person, it's hard to read the writing, but I think it's Sharon Brunkel? Brunkel?
Sharon Brunkel.
Do I have that right? Oh, good. And then Evan White and Richard Reed. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. You're pretty close.
Uh-huh.
Sharon Brunkel.
Sharon, oh, all right, thank you.
I reside at 845 Glen Creek, Northwest Salem, 9730.
Can you speak up? We can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm going to have a problem. I've got a good case of...
Can staff help her with the microphone, so she can...
Okay, I'll just hold it.
Just hold it, that's probably good.
Can you hear it better now?
Okay, that's better, thank you.
All right. Madam Mayor and members of council, years before the area was, area known as Riverfront Park was developed, Roger Gertinridge, then Mayor of Salem, appointed a large group of Salem citizens to explore the idea of turning a piece of undeveloped riverfrontage into a park available to all. I served on that group, proudly called Team Riverfront. Meeting for about two years, we went into the community talking to civic and business groups, school parent groups, business owners, neighborhood associations, and anyone who expressed an interest in Salem Park development. The message we received from our open meetings was enthusiastically supported. In the process, one overwhelming message from each of these areas was full support of building a safe recreational park, open to all, with development to occur as needed, desired, and afforded. When our report with recommended conclusions went to council, it was accepted and endorsed. Subsequent developments such as the Riverfront Carousel, the Children's Play Area, Echo Earth, Community Shelter, Amphitheater, and the Sternwheel Dock were all added in response to citizen input. I feel the development as presented here tonight makes a mockery of us all, our previous council, Team Riverfront, and those Salem citizens who participated in our study. I ask you to please consider thoughtfully and carefully before you allow the destruction of one of Salem's jewels, a full recreational park open to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right, thank you very much. Evan White and then Richard Reed.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. I am Evan White, 4553 Brock Loop, Land Use Chair of the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association. At our regularly scheduled meeting on June 20th, our board unanimously voted to request that council not grant any easements to the proposed apartment complex. Most of us have seen the full-page color ads about Virgil Pringle of Missouri who arrived here by covered wagon in 1846. Well, in the following year, in 1847, Erin and Melinda Purdy came here from Ohio along with their nine-year-old daughter Eleanor, who happens to be my great-grandmother. Erin was a millwright, and the Purdys and Pringles probably knew each other. Today, Salem has grown tremendously. As our friends in the Salem Chamber of Commerce remind us, Salem's population will continue to grow, so it is very surprising to hear some of them argue for construction of a standard apartment complex on one of the few open and undeveloped areas we have for an expansion of Riverfront Park. I've seen a guest opinion in The Statesman which claims that the benefits of this project have been validated by an independent third party. Any similarly-sized apartment complex would provide the same benefits, but without denigrating a public park. For example, there is a proposed 109-unit complex near my home off Skyline, which will be built without any special tax abatement. The Eco Northwest report should be seen for what it is, a public relations piece. Bush Park was established by our forefathers and mothers who had a vision for our city, but if today someone said, "Hey, I've got a great idea. Let's build 118-unit apartment complex in the middle of Bush Park," well, I'll bet that Eco Northwest would be happy to find, to provide another statement of jobs and economic benefits. that Eco Northwest would be happy to provide another statement of jobs and economic benefits. Please take the long view and think of the future of our city. Construction of this project would come at a terrible opportunity cost for our city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. White? All right. Thank you very much. I do want to remind people, we really want you to please address the access issue this evening. There are many aspects to the project, but tonight, our consideration really needs to focus on access. Yes, Mr. Reed, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Richard Reed, 3242 Bleff Avenue South. And I am addressing access. In fact, I was thinking about how nice it is to see those floaty kind of things when you go into the project and you're flying in and everything. And I think it might have been more appropriate to actually be seeing that through a windshield, because if you'll notice in those demonstrations, you never see any cars, and that's one of the big issues here. And so I just thought I'd mention that, that access is important. In fact, I'd rather characterize it as a choke point rather than access, the way it's going to be. I do want to call your attention to the idea of perhaps delaying a decision on this. And I want to start with the staff supplemental report that you have in this packet, and specifically the part where they were talking about that, I don't know what these acronyms are, but the LWCF thing and the, you know, what is that? LWCF, the Act 6F conversion process impacting all 22 acres of the park, that isn't settled. I think it might be appropriate to do that. The staff supplemental actually lists six items, you know, their staff recommends what they do, that the city at least consider the request for access, and they say, "If that's granted, here's six things we need to look at." I think it'd be better to look at those six things before you grant the access, because you're not going to be sure if you're going to get all those six things lined up and through the system. And that 6F item is certainly one of them. Okay. Moving on. The conversion of the property is subject to the Federal Land and Water Conservation URA. That's what I was going to do. The conclusion says, as noted in the staff report, one prerequisite of granting private access through Riverfront Park will be the approval of that conversion process through OPRD and NPS. This matter will return to council anyway, once all these issues have been resolved. Who will make the ultimate decision on whether to permit access? So basically, they're saying it's going to come back to council anyway. I also call your attention, in this packet, I counted, I stopped counting at 32 comments on this access, and of them, 30 were against it and two were in favor. I also want to call your attention to Jeffrey James' presentation in this packet. He's a guy with 50 years' experience in international architecture. He has good recommendations for good alternatives. Economic benefits to this, there might be greater economic benefits to another project. ODOT Rail, I wanted to get to that real quick. Basically, ODOT Rail in here in your packet says, "There's no such thing as a statewide prohibition of new grade crossings." So the guy, David Astley of ODOT, says basically, "This is an insurmountable thing at all. You can find other access across ODOT Rail if you try that." That was tried once, as I recall, and there was like a two-window opportunity for the development that they let slip, so that could happen again. So I'm just saying, there could be better benefits elsewhere, maybe delay this and think about this, because there's a lot to think about. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Reed? All right. Thank you very much. James Pullman, and then Betsy Belshaw. Mr. Pullman, are you here? Then we'll proceed with Betsy Belshaw. Thank you. And following her would be Lee Moore.
Hi. This is Betsy Belshaw, Ward 8. I'm going to sound very disjointed, because I had an overall picture, and you've just cut me off at the knees. So I'm going to read you part of my comment here.
I'm cutting everybody off at the knees, Betsy. It's not personal.
My father threatened to do it a long time ago. Let's see. The immediate problem facing you tonight is that of vehicle access. Vehicle access to the apartment building and other buildings above the carousel parking lot, the median which the visitors now stand, will be removed. It's a lovely median with trees. That goes out, and you end up with a Walmart parking lot with everything crammed in there and no place for anybody to sit back and watch the traffic move through the parking lot. I think that's a detriment. Your traffic study says that this isn't going to cause a lot of congestion. If you think about cars coming off of Front Street going to the apartment, it's laughable to say there's going to be a traffic calming there with signs saying 15 miles an hour. If you believe that, I'll take you out to Meadow Brown Park, where the park patrol spends most of its time trying to get people to obey the 20 miles an hour. They're going to want to get home to their apartment. They're going to drive 45, just like they do in replay cells. In addition to that, you've got people coming into the carousel, coming in and out. I can't see where you're going to have anything but a stack-up, not just at rush hour, but at other times, because people are in and out of that carousel parking lot all day. And you've got a Front Street stoplight with trains, people going to the apartment complex, people going to the carousel. And if you have people stacked up, lined up, trying to get onto Front Street, the light's going to be really blocking access to the main Front Street, because people are going to be coming on and off all the time. I call it a congestion problem.
And then comes the train.
Well, I just mentioned the trains. Yeah. That's going to cause problems, too. And now you've got the fire trucks coming down through the main park path, because they're trying to get to somebody who's left their burner on and their stove in the apartment building and has started a fire. And the park is full of people. What are you going to do? You're going to put up a fence and say during events, what about when non-event time is going on, and the fire truck's coming down, trying to get at the fire with people full of the park, I mean, the park full of people? I don't see that as being anything but a problem. I'm going to talk fast, and I'm going to go to my conclusion. I've thought much about the plans and problems, as well as the history of the park, and some thoughts come to mind. There was much talk and consternation when the developer versus park first raised its head, and that all ended when Mayor Gingrich said it was clear to him that the citizens wanted a park, and that's what they were going to get. Since then, Riverfront Park has blossomed into a jewel of this city beloved by its residents. We are now at another development versus park situation, and it's my belief that the people of this city do not want an apartment building complex encroaching directly on their park in one place.
Excuse me, you're three minutes.
On the park. I've got two more sentences. So...
Quick.
I'm aware that Mr. Tokarski and the city attempted to negotiate purchase of the land but could not agree on a price. Now, let's all put our heads together and come up with a way to solve this conundrum. The Salem Parks Foundation will do whatever it can, and I'm certain other organizations and citizens will also help us raise the money to buy this land and leave it a park, because that's what the citizens want. That is an access discussion, but it's a bigger picture.
Please don't.
So I think we need to buy this land and let Mr. Tokarski off the hook financially, because the poor man's in trouble, I'm sure. And get the park to stay a park.
I'm sorry. I have to say, you must stop talking. Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Betsy Belshaw? All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming and for testifying. Lee Moore, and then Doug Doty. Mr. Moore? Is Mr. Moore still here? All right. Doug Doty? I know he's here.
Doug Doty. I think my address is 143 Liberty Street, Apartment 6, in the Bishop Building. I've been there about a month. And along with my three months, well, we've lived there. Sure. We're living across the street. My wife, Gail, called Ross Doty, and I are living across the street from our project, the McGilchrist Buildings and Roth Buildings Restoration, which is two blocks from the park. We spend a number of evenings per week at the park, walking. Lovely park. I agree with all of you about that. But I also agree with Counselor Thomas, when she said it only takes a spark. Do want to announce to you, in case you don't know, that there's only one construction project, private construction project going on in Salem, Oregon, right now, in downtown. And that's our building. It's only one. Only one, in a city of this size. And we have the Marion Park, Parkade, or whatever you call the thing, being restored, the county building. But since Ross addressed for less, we're it. That's not a lot of activity, you guys, in downtown. If you want momentum, we've got to have more than one building going up at a time. Now, speaking of access, we want the 118 families wandering down to our businesses that are going to be located in our store, two blocks away. And by the way, we will have a grocery store market in our building, 3,200 square foot Italian deli and market. So I think it's really important that we work together. You know, there's also a demand. Let me give you a report on our building. We have eight apartments available, because we're going to take one of them. There are nine up there. We have 28 people on our waiting list, and we've never advertised one time. 28. I want you to understand, there's demand for apartments in the downtown. This would double the apartments. Think what that does for our businesses downtown, to double the occupancy of the downtown. Tremendous. We support the Mountain West Project, not to hurt the park, not to hurt anyone's feelings, not to be contrary in any way, but we have to coexist, business and pleasure has to coexist. There's got to be a win-win available here. I would urge the city council and our Salem population to seek out a resolution here that would meet both needs, and that's my conclusion.
Before you leave the podium, are there questions of Mr. Doty? All right. Thank you. Appreciate you coming and testifying this evening. Glenn Seidler, and then Roger Banks.
Glenn Seidler, thank you, who?
All right. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I respect and honor your directives for us to respond directly to the access, the 20-foot wide between State Street entrance and the three acres of apartment buildings. Now, I was going to direct myself to why I wrote a letter in response to The Statesman Journal's question, "The Boise Puzzle," of June 16, 2013. But you want, what I'm about to say would otherwise cut across to us. I'm a letter writer, and if you read my letter that was in The Statesman Journal on June 25 of 2013, you'll know that you can now put a face with a letter writer. What I was responding to was the question posed by The Statesman Journal on Sunday, June 16 of 2013. And so take yourself back to that point in time, not when the advertisements have come out in The Statesman Journal about Pringle Park, et cetera. This has to do with how you're going to resolve the problem of the Boise Puzzle. And I'll just quote one brief sentence. "I would suggest that the simplest solution to this puzzle would be for the developer to donate that part of the property that lies west of Burlington Northern, Santa Fe Railroad tracks to the city of Salem." Now, I appreciate, Madam Mayor, you're wanting to keep all of the property on the tax rolls as possible. There would be some gray areas in this, because obviously, if the city became, acquired the property, it's not going to pay a tax to itself. Your light just went off. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you very much. Roger Banks, and then Kathy Sharp. And I really am encouraging, please, discuss access. Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Roger Banks. Excuse me. I reside at 4640 Brush College Road Northwest. I also have property at South End of Salem, so I commonly come across the Center Street Bridge and take the off-ramp down onto Front Street on my way to South Commercial. I would like to point out that there are ample problems right there. Every time any pedestrian hits the button for a crosswalk, traffic promptly backs up onto the ramp. Then you have people who are coming in southbound from North Commercial, which puts them into the left lane, and when they want to go to the carousel, they promptly hit their right turn signal and either crowd somebody out or stop in trying to make a sudden right turn. Come and watch the people that dither there and back up traffic that is coming from West Salem, or even farther west on Oregon State Highway 22, which has to come to a complete stop. Now, I realize many of the high-priced representatives here want to direct your attention completely away from traffic. Well, I'm here, having spent 16 and a half years with ODOT, I pay attention to traffic. And I can tell you, there is a problem already. There in mind, all you need is one of those dithering drivers to make a mistake. You have one crash, and immediately you will have traffic on Oregon 22, backed up across the Center Street Bridge, backed up Wallace Road, and backed up halfway to Dallas. If you don't think that's going to impact Salem, you're sadly mistaken. I realize these people don't want you to consider that, they want to direct your attention away from traffic. Well, access is going to be an issue, guaranteed.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Kathy Sharp, and then Wallace Reed.
I must have signed the wrong thing.
You're asking us to take your name off the list? Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, councilors, staff, my name is Wallace Reed. I live in Laura Tesler's Ward. I've signed my name in a number of different places. And I'd like to take the opportunity to give you an opportunity not to approve this access at this time. Use it as a fallback. The entire effort you're looking at on access here is a fallback to what really should be done. Sadly, earlier, Mr. Fernandez and others were beat about the ears, or perhaps other things, by ODOT, asking for access through the property, giving the applicant their own access. It is believed, and I think increasingly demonstrated, that ODOT would be receptive to a new application for an at-grade crossing. In order to succeed at that, the city would need to demonstrate that there was no overpass or underpass possible from the rest of the property. I'm confident that the distances involved would make that demonstration relatively easily. The second thing is to demonstrate safety. And there's no question in my mind, but others will talk about the safety, in fact, everybody's talked about the safety, of this particular approach. Their own access across would be much safer. And so what I'm asking is that the city make the effort once again to get a grade crossing for the applicant through their own property, and let this simply go away. If they fail at that, this is clearly a fallback. But I urge you not to take the fallback position tonight, but as the other Mr. Reed said, take some time, think about this, use that time, and it's not going to be massive time, they've got other things to solve. And so asking for this next crossing won't take much more time than asking for all of the National Park and the other things like that. Please exercise this option. You don't have to do an up or down tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony this evening. Leonard Burbaker, and then Tim O'Neill, followed by Roger...
All right.
Thank you. Leroux, I can't read your writing. That's all right.
All three have signed the wrong thing.
Oh, you did. You did not want to testify for this? All right. Okay. Then that brings us down to Carol Snyder, followed by Elaine Sanchez, followed by Hazel Patton. Carol Snyder? Okay. Good. Thanks.
I'm Carol Snyder. I live at the corner of Wilson and Fur South in Ward 7. And I recently submitted a guest opinion to the Statesman Journal regarding the complex. And my concern that I expressed there involved the parking lot by the carousel. I, I don't think there's enough parking being provided for the apartment buildings, knowing that if there's a two-bedroom apartment and two people living in, there are two cars. And in regular apartment buildings, people park on the streets, but there's no street here. So the parking that they will park in with their extra cars or their guest cars will be the carousel parking lot. And I don't know if that can be arranged so that doesn't happen, but I think that's a real consideration as far as access. And then, of course, there just is the problem of, of children. And I know that there's a fence and everything, but I, I think there's a safety issue as well. And I think if you don't allow the access, that maybe the other end of this whole parcel could be developed first, which doesn't have a negative impact on the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? All right, thank you, appreciate you coming down and testifying. Elaine Sanchez, followed by Hazel Patton. Greetings.
Greetings. I'm Elaine Sanchez, I live at 2725 Prominent Court South in South Salem. I, I didn't have a slide, but I wanted to show this image, and I know that it's been an inflammatory image, and that really is not my intention, however, I do want to bring it to the attention of the councilors and, and if you met a mayor. I know that the, already, the emergency route to the carousel and to the park is through the entrance at the north end of the park. We're aware of that. But because of the unpredictable nature of people in a public space, I think you really have to stop and consider that this is going to put a tremendous pressure on the emergency responders to decide between rushing to a fire or an emergency at the south end of the park and putting the risk of children and other people who are using the park putting them at risk. And, and I just don't think it's worth it. And if you say, "Well, that, that just doesn't happen, we have not had that many calls to the south end of the park," that's absolutely true, but you don't have 200 people living there right now. When you increase the population, you're going to increase the number of injuries, the number of illnesses, the number of thefts, the number of domestic violence issues, the number of fires. That brings more emergency vehicles into the park. When you stop and consider that you have the two entrances, the two railroad entrances, if it is blocked at State Street, then the next one is at Union Street, all you have to have is 35 cars on a train to block both of those intersections at the same time. There are seven trains that go past these intersections every 24 hours. At least one a week is more than a mile in length. According to Marie Bradford, there have been five trains in the past 10 years that have jumped the tracks, and that she has been called and notified that it will be 45 minutes to an hour before they can get the, the tracks back on, or the train back on the track and clear the intersections. If you have a major emergency at the south end of the park in those apartments, and you cannot get your emergency responders through the park, I think it's, it's a potential for disaster. I am opposed to the apartments for a number of reasons, but there is an opportunity. In your package, you'll see that there was a letter that the carousel agreed to close the south, or close the entrance to State Street in 2009. This could be replotted, to give them entrance in the south. They could build a bridge over Pringle Creek. You could leave the carousel safe and the playground safe and, and help them with this. I would urge you to please find a way to buy the property where they want to build these apartments. Buy it from them, expand the park, that would give them money to help develop the rest of the development. I think it's wonderful that they want to develop anything that is east of the railroad tracks.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your testimony. Are there questions from councilors? Councilor Nanki has a question for you.
Yes, thank you, perfect timing, because it was like right before the meeting, and staff was willing to accommodate, because we'd had a work session prior, and I had them pull maps of that exact location topographically and floodplain-wise. Have you shown that other cross-connection to anyone?
No. I just took it from Google Maps.
As far as actually going underneath the railroad tracks on the south side?
It has been approved, it has been approved by the railroad that they can use the space underneath the trusses, yes.
Yeah, and I'd actually heard that just earlier tonight.
Yes.
And, and checked, and it, it's actually possible to run another bridge across on that.
Yes.
On the backside. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
For actually letting me see it.
Yeah, you have it in your packet.
So, I'll be asking people why they can't do that.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I have another question for you, Councilor Benars.
I asked a question at the works, well, at our work session, and basically that parking lot that's on, on the sluice side is an 100-year floodplain. It's not actually why I raised my hand, I think we need to have a motion to extend the meeting to 15 minutes.
Yes, we do, or it will actually...
We do, I wanted to grant courtesy to our, to our testifying person.
But if it expires, we're dead, it can't restart.
And then we'll deal with the expiration.
I'll defer to the parliamentarian.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we need to do it right now.
All right.
So move.
Councilor Bennett.
Madam Mayor, I'll move an extension for 30 minutes.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Bennett, seconded by Councilor Clausen, to extend for 30 minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. Apology to you.
All right.
All right, other questions for Elaine Sanchez? All right, thank you very much. And Hazel Patton, followed by Dave Walker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Hazel Patton, and I live at 1363 Court Northeast. And I am here to speak about the concern of the entryway and the parking area in front of the carousel. To put 870 additional vehicles, including service vehicles and moving vans, right in front of the carousel, where there are many children coming and going, makes no sense. And will, I fear, invite a tragedy or discourage visitors from coming to the carousel. I have a couple of rhetorical questions that I don't expect an answer for, but I want you to think about them. The developers say they are going to provide a drop-off space at the carousel. Does anyone have an idea about how that might work out for a mother taking a four-year-old and a two-year-old to the park? The second question. The developers say they will redesign the parking lot to provide a few more parking spaces. That plan includes eliminating the current island, which provides a safety zone for parents to unload strollers, diaper bags, coolers, and other equipment. If you get rid of this island, it puts all of that activity, plus small children, on the pavement where there will be traffic. Which means, if they park on the east edge of the lot, they will have to cross two lanes and three rows of parked cars. How much more difficult and dangerous do you think it might be for a mom or a dad who doesn't have another adult along to keep their children safe while unloading and crossing the parking lot with the new angled and narrow spaces? Thousands of volunteer hours and monetary donations have been given to create this work of art we call our Salem's Riverfront Carousel. Many volunteers also created and funded the Equal Earth Ball, the popular children's playground area, and the movies in the park. All will be negatively impacted by this proposed development. These entities were given to the city council to protect, so they could be enjoyed by all members of our community and our visitors. We look to our city leaders to ensure these gifts are safely protected and accessible to everyone. And I go along with Betsy and with Elaine, I think if we took up a collection here tonight, maybe we could start buying that property and give it to the city.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Ms. Patton? Appreciate your testimony and coming down, thank you very much. Dave Walker, followed by Bob Omart.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is David Walker, and I'm here to represent a number of people that aren't here, not, not here tonight, and these people were the people that created the carousel. There was about 84,000 hours volunteered in this carousel over 10 years ago. And when we got finished with the project, it was about $1.7 million, and the project was paid for. We also, since then, there has been 2.3 million rides on the carousel. This is really significant in the life of Salem. And I come here this evening thinking that there's just more than capital efficiency. And there's more than getting out of paying your taxes. And I was in a meeting just prior to this, and it was a work session, and there was a report about a number of businesses that were asked to be part of this project. And basically, they respectfully declined. And I'm just one person in this city, but my wife and I helped create that project. We oversaw the project, and we worked with hundreds of people for five years doing it. And in light of what I know and what the heart of the people are that volunteered their time, I respectfully declined the project too. And this council has a big decision to make. And it's not a light decision. One of the things that is really significant in our community is being good neighbors. We have tried to be a good neighbor to this city in the, in the working of the carousel project. There are several things. One of the things in, in the carousel is not just getting in, but you get out, and of that whole facility. And the hard part is getting out. It's not bad getting in when you've got three cars waiting in line and you can get in. But you're waiting to get out, you can pretty back up in there. And it's only 20 feet wide, and you're going to run that whole facility, all those apartments, through this one thing. And I think it's time that we start looking at some factors about being good neighbors, besides just assuming that the other part of that parking lot belonged to this new program that we've got. It does now belong to the carousel. And they're talking about making this road through there and it would be theirs. They're not there yet, it's not theirs, it's the carousel.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Are there questions for Mr. Walker? All right, thank you for coming down. Mr. Omart, welcome.
Thank you. Madam, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Bob Omart, and I reside at 2185 High Street Southeast. I am the current board vice chairperson of the Salem Riverfront Carousel, a nonprofit corporation which has operated successfully for over 12 years from our facility located at 101 Front Street Northeast, directly west of the railroad tracks at the intersection of State and Front Street. The carousel is overseen by a 12-person board of directors and run by a small, hard-working, dedicated staff with the assistance of hundreds of volunteers. The carousel animals are all handcrafted by volunteer carvers and painters, and in 2012, we provided over 127,000 rides. The carousel board is supportive of the Boise Cascade property being redeveloped, but has one major concern. The ingress and egress to 118 proposed apartment units and retail space will go directly past our front door. We continue to live with a most difficult congested traffic situation with people traveling to and from the parking lot we share with many thousands of park visitors. These people include participants in many dozens of special park events held annually, walkers, joggers, and kids enjoying the play area directly south of our facility. In the near future, it is likely that there will be many additional parking lot users wishing to access a nearby proposed footbridge to Middle Broward Island. Our carousel riders to date have ranged in age from one month to 105 years, with a large majority being younger children who tend to be very excited about their visits and sometimes oblivious to tack traffic concerns. We have had a number of near misses over the years involving autos, pedestrians, and trains. Adding the through traffic, which will be created by the proposed 118 apartment units and retail space, including tenants, retail customers, workmen, and other visitors, could make a very difficult and sometimes very dangerous situation much worse. Our board in September of 2009 supported and approved proposal to close the State Street access to the park and move it south through the Boise Cascade project area. It was our understanding that both the developer and the city were in favor of this move, but it did not happen. We continue to believe that such a move would benefit all parties involved and would most certainly create a safer environment for all park users, and certainly have far better access to the proposed department and retail complex. The carousel board submitted a letter to Mayor Peterson and Council President Bennett following our board's July 17, 2013, decision to oppose the proposed development of multifamily units west of the railroad tracks and south of the carousel complex. The board's primary reason for this action was the before-mentioned young child safety issue, which we feel cannot be remedied with proposals, excuse me, proposals such as a dedicated drop-off area.
Mr. Omart, I'm sorry to have to interrupt you, but your time is up.
I'm done.
Are you done?
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming and testifying. Are there questions from any councilors, for Mr. Omart? All right, thank you very much. I see a name, I can't see what the first name is, Raul is the last name, begins with a J, so help me out here.
Jody Raul.
Judy?
Jody.
Jody, thank you.
565 Lefell Street South. I'm just here as a concerned citizen, and I would like to encourage the council to pass the access for the development. We've lived here 30 years, and when I hear somebody say, "Think about it a little bit longer," that's been an eyesore in Salem for the whole 30 years that we've been here. And I just had the benefits written down, we've all covered those, everything. The one thing that hasn't been mentioned is simply the beautification to Salem, downtown Salem, and everyone who enters our city basically has to go past the Boise Cascade site, which is truly an eyesore. I, just to drive this point home, I'd like to just share a comment made during a family business meeting. We're in the process of recruiting a new partner for Dave's office, and so they, we laid out the agenda for the weekend to, you know, convince him that Salem was the place to be since they're in high demand. And at the end of the meeting, it was suggested to the driver to make sure they use Mission Street and come up 12th, simply to avoid coming in through the Boise Cascade site. And everyone laughed, but it really isn't a joke. I mean, I, I think people's opinions of Salem are formed immediately, and we're at the point where we're recruiting a lot of professionals I know in Salem. So I would just encourage you to give access and on the contingency that it's safe and, you know, makes sense for, for all of Salem, but I think that can be done with this bank of talented, you know, obviously, people, so.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilors? Well, thank you for coming down and testifying this evening. Ron Cooper, followed by JW Eastridge. Mr. Cooper, and then Dave.
My name is Ron Cooper. I live at 1070 Cascade Drive Northwest in Salem. I drive across that bridge every day down Front Street and past that intersection where the light is. And I agree, this is going to be a serious problem for people who live in West Salem. Traffic is only going to get worse, the volume of traffic is going to increase over the years, and people crossing at that intersection, going to... intersection, going to events. It's hard enough to get through there now. I can't imagine what it's going to be like in five years with the addition of the people coming back and forth from their apartments. Furthermore, let me just say that, in addition to the problems this is going to cause for the city of Salem, this is a treasure. This is a treasure that we have in this community, this park and the carousel that you just spoke about. It's a jewel. And if it gets too hard for people to go and attend this place, I don't know, there must be other grandparents. I have a daughter. My oldest daughter lives in Geneva, Switzerland, and I have a grandson, and they came to visit. They've been here three times in the last five years. He's five years old, and when they come, the first thing they want to do, he wants to go to the carousel. And if it gets access gets harder and harder, and people can't access it, people are not going to use that resource. And I just hate to see this treasure that we have in this community shrivel and dry up because we didn't have the concern for the legacy that someone else has left to us. As we walk, as we pass through this life, we all leave a legacy behind us. And this is an opportunity to leave something to our children or our grandchildren that's worthwhile. I think the development can be done, but it can be done in a rational kind of way, and it can be done in a way that benefits everybody who lives in this community, not just one private company or business for personal profit. I do believe there is a solution, and maybe we're just rushing too fast. Please take the time and look at this, but don't rush into it, and think of the legacy that you leave to your children and your grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cooper. Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you. Mr. Eastridge.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Welcome.
I'm Jim Eastridge from Magoo Sports Bar, two seventy-five Commercial Southeast. I've been at Magoo since nineteen seventy-one. I'm probably the closest business to the Boise Cascade property. I was at Magoo's the day the Marion Hotel burned down, and the entire length of time it took the hotel to spiral into the ground until the city was kind enough to build a new conference center and a hotel, which has been fabulous. Today comes the next generation of the new project for our end of town. We really need this access to make the project get started, to, as somebody said earlier, to jumpstart the entire project. The project, I think, probably doubles the amount of people living downtown or the number of apartments, or between two and three hundred tonight, and how many people might live there. It's time for the city to step up and help downtown again, revitalize the Boise Cascade property, and to help fill up the restaurants, bring people to the bakeries, the jewelers, the art galleries, the bike stores, make it happen downtown. This could also create demand for retail space. There's lots of empty spaces. If there was more people, more businesses would come downtown. Please allow me to be here again when the Boise property is revitalized. I urge you to vote for this access so that the project can get started. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? We appreciate your testimony. Dave Egan, followed by Casia Quillanen, and then Joe Burns.
Casey, Casia Quillanen is not going to testify.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. She just told me she--
I think you better let her speak for herself.
It's obvious we're married. My name is David Engen, and I've testified many times here over the last fifteen, twenty years. I was on the Parks Board back in the nineties, I guess it was. What you have, what you're going to approve, if you approve this, is you're going to approve another lane of traffic going into a funnel. And that, all that is going to do is just going to jam up. When the gentleman was talking about the entrances into the parking lots in the schools, that was not a good analogy, because that's not a funnel. Those weren't funnels. You go in and you go out a different place. This is a problem, and I don't think you're going to be able to lick it by putting in another street going into that funnel. The project, if it needs a tax abatement, it should not be built. As a taxpayer, that's what I feel. I don't think I should be paying for this project. I would like more housing downtown. It's just in the wrong place. If these people had moved a little bit, they could get on the other side of the railroad track, and they wouldn't have this problem. This comes from the two thousand and eight report, talking about the move at grade crossing. We all recognized early on that poor access would doom the site to mediocre or no redevelopment. Good, highly visible, and well-planned access is a key to unlock the site's potential as a major destination for Salem's downtown area. This is not a good, highly visible, and well-planned access. This is a funnel. I urge you to turn it down. That land really belongs to the park, and it should be part of the park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors?
By the way, did I give you my address? Eleven forty-five Fourteenth Street.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Casia Quillanen, followed by Joe Burns, followed by Bill Chardon. All right. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Mayor and City Councilors. My name's Casia Quillanen, and I am married to that gentleman, and he always does do something weird like this. And we do live at one one four five Fourteenth Street Northeast. Now, I'm going to tell you right off the bat that I'm currently opposed to the development of Riverfront Park for a number of reasons, but first of all, I want to make it clear that I'm not opposed to development of downtown residential property or to mixed-use development. I am a member of the Parks Board currently, but the opinions I express are my own. There are numerous problems set forth in the staff report, all of which I think need to be addressed before you should feel comfortable with going ahead of this, with this project. This proposed development is going to be built on the backs of about thirty years of public planning and millions of dollars spent in acquisition and development, as well as private investment and volunteer efforts. Now, we've talked a lot this evening, in fact, about the economic benefits and opportunities and so forth that this development will bring. However, there is also a lost opportunity cost for future citizens and future park expansion if this complex is allowed. Once the land is gone, it's gone. And long-range park planning has always included the possibility, if not the probability, that someday those remaining four acres would be added to Riverfront Park, completing a unique and vast network of parks stretching from Kaiser to Minto Brown. Now, the access issue is interesting, because we've looked at a whole lot of diagrams this evening, and I've seen several, and I talked to several of the planners, and we've seen several different versions of this so far. One of the things which was not addressed was the distance between the entrance to the parking lot carousel and the entrance to the private road. I don't know. I have not seen that on a diagram anyplace. I don't know whether it's twenty feet, whether it's the width of a road or not. The diagram also shows a circular pattern within the carousel parking lot, which would result in a traffic backup, as previously described. And it's not clear whether there would be an exit from the carousel parking lot at the south end onto the private road. So I think those are things that we need to consider. Finally, there's been some discussion about purchase of this acre of land. How about asking the public for a short-term GO bond based on an agreed price settled by binding arbitration? And has anybody even asked the Parks Department how much SDC money is available or could be available for purchase? So maybe now's the time, as somebody else commented, to pull all our resources together and just do it, preserving and creating a legacy for everyone forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Quillanen? All right. We appreciate your testimony. Thank you. Joe Burns, followed by Bill Charndon. It's hard to read some of the writing. Is Mr. Burns here? Mr. Charndon?
Bill Charndon.
Thank you. Followed by Marcus Wong and Chris Wong.
Hi, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Council. My name's Bill Charndon. I live at thirteen twenty-three Chomecada. I'm one of the sponsors of the American Flyer Horse at the Carousel, and I feel very deeply about the carousel and the children that are going to be there and the older people that go there. And I would like you to just consider about this access, that if somebody's coming out of the carousel or going into it, they have to go upstairs. And those stairs, if you fall on those stairs, you end up right on the road they're talking about. And I just think that, you know, adding another hundred and twenty apartments there and having your grandkids with you, and they rush across somewhere and you grab them and you're going downstairs, you could end up having a bad accident. And I don't think we really ought to be putting that there. And there are other alternatives that we could look at. We already can get under the railroad, because there is this truss over there to have that parking lot. And really, what we ought to be talking about is putting a bridge across Pringle Park, and that would connect the whole thing together, and they would leave the carousel all by itself. And I just think there's a lot of people that have donated an awful lot of time, and it's a jewel in Salem, and it's what you see when you come down Front Street. And to do anything that could hurt that would be a shame. So, I don't know. It's all I really have to say.
I apologize. Are there questions from councilors? We appreciate you coming to testify. Thank you very much. Marcus Wong, followed by Chris Wong. Are you still here? Judy Wong? Michael Lumstring?
Livingston.
Livingston. Oh, indeed. All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Michael Livingston. I live at five eighty-five Winter Street Northeast in Salem. Your Honor, in the interest of being brief, I want to join in the comments of Ms. Sanchez, Ms. Patton, Mr. Omar, Mr. Cooper, Ms. Quillanen, and urge you to do two things. One, if you're going to vote tonight, which I urge you not to do, to vote no on this access for the reasons that they said. And in addition to this, I've noted that pedestrian access now to the park is woefully inadequate. In fact, it's sort of an embarrassment. This nine hundred trip-a-day increase that the developers have predicted can only further compound that. And as a gentleman from West Salem described his current difficulty in getting through there now, this would only compound it. It appears to me that for reasons of highly speculative economic benefit, you're being asked to rush to judgment on something that really is way more complicated than this. And I really think, as a number of other speakers have said tonight, that there is a way both to support the development and revitalization of the Boise Cascade property and at the same time to preserve what has been adequately and correctly described as a jewel of the city. So I urge you first to put off this vote. There's no need to rush to judgment tonight. And if not, if you're unable to do that, to vote no on this access request. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Livingston. Are there questions? Counselor Clausen.
Sorry, not a question. I've got a motion.
Yes, I would entertain your motion.
I'd like to move to extend to eleven o'clock.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clausen and seconded by Counselor Bernard to extend to eleven o'clock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say name. Motion carries. Thank you. I want to back up to Mr. Livingston. Were there questions of councilors of Mr. Livingston? All right. Thank you. All right. Jennifer Martin, followed by Ian Levin, followed by Suzanne Lamone.
Pardon me if I yawn.
I know.
Jennifer Martin, I'm a commercial real estate broker with Sperry Van Ness Commercial Advisors at sixteen sixty-five Liberty, and I hope that my comments aren't falling on tired ears. And I did actually revise all of my comments to stick to the topic of access rather than the topic of the economic development of this project. Something that Scott Mansour didn't speak to with DKS Engineering is the timing of the trips that will be generated by this project. Many of the residents that live in the apartments will be either AM peak or PM peak travelers, hopefully thereby missing the high-peak times of the carousel users, which I would project to be more mid-morning to mid-to-late-afternoon users, rather than on the way to work and on the way home from work during the day. And with respect to the comments with regard to overflow parking of the residents into the carousel, I do understand that the project parking exceeds the requirements by the code for development of multifamily residential. The developer is proposing to utilize the existing at-grade crossing to, I think, help enhance safety, rather than add another at-grade crossing and create additional potential for pedestrian interface with the at-grade crossing and with any trains that will be coming across there, and actually hoping to create fewer crossings per day rather than multiples at different intersections. In addition, I've got to speak to the economic development. It's just in my blood. The catalytic components of this project, I think, far outweigh the other parts that exist out there. The trickle-down effect, to Counselor Dickey's comments, I think the jobs impact of seventy-two to eighty jobs created by marquee and the residential components versus the comments made on behalf of the chamber by Barb with respect to the hundred and ninety jobs, I think that's the trickle-down jobs that are created because of the catalytic development that occurs beyond, that this will allow to occur. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Bennett.
Madam Mayor, before we move to questions, I move to--
Oh, excuse me, we--
Oh, you did it. I missed it. Okay. Yeah, I want to ask you about, were you here for the last round with this developer on this site? Were you here on dab and involved in the economic--
No, I think that predates me just--
Okay. I just wondered, because what you said is an echo for me. And this was all said before, last time they came in for the same thing. It was all about jobs. It was the future of the community. You know, everything was going to happen, hundreds of jobs were going to occur. I was just curious if you'd heard all this before, because it was so similar, a batch of language, as I heard then. And you know what? They didn't build, and they didn't use the crossing. Do you see my concern?
Counselor Bennett, I do. And if I may, part of my previous comments surrounded the fact that a lot has occurred in the last five years. And I think many people in our community, I think everybody in this room knows somebody who has delayed retirement or made a different decision in their lives because of what has occurred over the past five years. I bought a piece of land in central Oregon that I was so excited to have my second home started on now, and the property's worth half of what I owe. And so I don't think that this project is immune to that economic phenomenon, and I think we are at a unique opportunity right now to take advantage of two projects that have been determined to be economically feasible. You heard Jason's testimony in the work session and his comments, and I've been through some of those iterations. I talked with New Seasons myself. We're not smart enough for them. They want thirty-five percent bachelors and above, and our community doesn't support that. So I think that we could debate the timing all night long, but we've got to take advantage at some point. They want to spend thirty million dollars.
They say that. They said that before, but I'm intrigued too, because we had a lot of people say no. And one of the questions I asked, I don't know if you heard it, was, have you done the market research? Do we-- Well, no, our experience tells us, you know, I hear what you're saying, and I thought Jason did a good job of skirting the issue, but I'm not sure I got a direct answer.
Bless your heart. Our company actually does a market update every single year, and we go out and survey the marketplace, and multifamily is one of the sectors that we survey. And our market is in an unhealthy level with regard to demand for additional multifamily units. Our vacancy in the marketplace is actually below three percent for multifamily, which indicates a pent-up demand for additional multifamily. a pent-up demand for additional multifamily units.
We could debate this all evening.
Well, I have the numbers in my office. I'll be more than happy to supply them.
Yeah.
Better move along. Thank you.
Other questions for Jennifer Martin? All right, thank you for coming. We appreciate your testimony. All right. Ian Levin, followed by Suzanne Lamone, and then Lois Parker.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Ian Levin. I work at Nathan Levin Company, PO Box 4174, Salem, Oregon 97302. My roles are as the principal broker in the office. Daily operation is property management, and I'm also a licensed general contractor in the state of Oregon. And I oversee all of our construction projects. Nathan Levin Company is not responsible for the opinions shared here this evening. These are my own personal opinions. However, I wouldn't have these personal opinions if I didn't have this job. And so I have to relate to my place of work. We, over the years, have done a lot of developments particularly related to derelict property, property that was left and languished for a long time. And one of the indisputable facts of derelict property is that it is complicated in some way. And over the years, dealing with how to fix and revive that property, the underlying issue to every single one was access and parking. And the reality is that when you're dealing with a property like this, there isn't going to be a perfect solution. But I think the access that has been designed is a good solution. And the reason it's a good solution is that there's limitations by Front Street and how it's shaped. And we're not going to go move Front Street. And we're not going to go move the carousel park. And so looking at how do you take advantage of that piece of land that is well-suited for an apartment complex? And this access road is not gregarious in size. It doesn't take overly advantage of the access via the carousel parking lot. It's a simple, straightforward design. We don't have any other complications with river crossing, bridges, going under the rail pass. It's a very simple, clean design. I encourage you guys to look at this and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Levin? All right, appreciate your testimony. All right, moving quickly here, Suzanne Lamone and Louis Parker, followed by Debbie Crooks. Crooks or Crooks? Not here? Anita Owen, followed by Bill Dalton.
We have one of them.
Yes?
My name is Lois Parker. I live at 1496 Court Street Northeast. I'm here as a citizen. I'm a grandmother of two young children between five, three and five. And I would like to say that when we go to the carousel, we not always are contained in our enjoyment. And sometimes we run around the parking lot. So I would be in favor of not voting for this river access road. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much. Debbie Crooks, followed by Anita Owen. Yeah?
Debbie's gone.
Oh, did you sign up previously? I mean, were you previously on the list?
I'm Anita Owen.
All right.
My name is Anita Owen, 1795 Summer Street Southeast. And I'm happy to be here to be able to speak to the city council. I am a person who always tries and puts the welfare of families, the people of the community, the old and the young, before anything else. And I'm asking you to do the same. I am saying no on the access through our park because it is too congested right in that area at that light. And I don't want the congestion at the entry to our most beautiful park. I am for this wonderful apartment complex if they would get an access down off of somebody else, you know, somewhere further south, not off the park. I am not forgiving them tax abatement. This is going to be a very prosperous business for whoever's building it. And I am not forgiving them an easement on so close to the park property. They should follow the regular building rules. If you put people first, you put your families, the safety of your children, people out there with their dogs and kids and having fun, I want that to be first and foremost in the minds of the city councilors and looking out for our community. So I guess that is the main thing, no on the access through the park.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? All right, thanks for coming down and testifying this evening. Bill Dalton, followed by Louis Garcia and Larry Sharp.
Hi, Bill Dalton, 6619 Huntington Avenue Southeast. What a wonderful opportunity to say something that would sum up the past five hours or six hours or seven hours plus staff time that you've all had. I'd love to be able to do that. Sort of my business as an administrator over the years, and I have done that. And I guess in that context, I would say a few things. One is, this is obviously not a viable project. Hey, wait a minute. We've got plans. We've got, you know, people have testified. We have beautiful drawings. Well, it's not a feasible project without giving up taxes for 10 years, which has been estimated at $2.3 million by some. It's not a feasible project unless we make all sorts of very important and potentially very negative kinds of compromises around an existing public facility that we have, the park, the carousel, parking. We've heard on the access issue, and I really appreciate how hard you've worked to keep us to the access issue during this part of the testimony, we've heard that the negative impacts that we're talking about as part of this compromise would include access, traffic flow, pedestrian safety, motorist safety, detrimental to carousel use, detrimental to carousel users' safety, potentially detrimental to the park. And that doesn't even mention that it's detrimental to the taxpayers. This is going to be upper-middle-class housing that we're being asked to make these kind of compromises for. I think this is a wonderful project. I'm excited about the architectural renderings. I think it can be done beautifully. I don't think it's up to Salem to give up a portion of its beautiful park to accomplish it. And I don't think it's up to Salem and all of our taxpayers to subsidize this kind of wonderful, capitalistic, private entrepreneurial enterprise. I think it's wonderful that the city is working so hard to bring these kind of developers in. But I think we need to ask these kinds of developers to stand on their own two feet and prove that it's going to be beneficial to the city, at least to the lengths that we're being asked to go to make it feasible for them. I really appreciate the councilors hanging in there this way tonight. For heaven's sake, listen to some of the people who have said, "Don't act tonight if you can't act in a way that leaves you with a free conscience that you've done what the citizens of Salem are asking you to do as your elected officials." Thanks so much.
Thank you. Are there questions of Mr. Dalton? All right, thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Twice in one evening, there we are. Louis Garcia, followed by Larry Sharp. Tim Cowan, followed by Jan B., whoever that might be. No, Tim is declining. All right, Jan B. is here, the initial B. Dan Dorn, Brent DeHart, and Allison Kelly are the last ones on the list.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Dan Dorn, PO Box 3577, Salem, Oregon. I think that the developer and the architects tonight did a really good job showing you how you would access this property. I think it's going to be safe. I don't think it's going to interfere with pedestrian traffic. Right now, the pedestrian traffic, if you look at the entrance to the carousel, it's all on the north side of State Street, and it will remain there. And there won't be any need to cross that street. So I'm urging you to grant access to this property. And something that nobody's pointed out this evening is that if you grant access to this development, this proposed project is a prime example of Oregon land use goals. It's a compact, it's a buildup, not sprawl, build-out sprawl. It's close to the core. And also, it will work to reduce vehicle uses, which is all-important in Oregon's land use plan. It takes also advantage of the lower cost of construction methods. When you look at the other housing projects that have attempted success in downtown, they were commercial-type construction projects which are more expensive to build than a three-story wood-framed structure. This will put an economic shot in the arm in the downtown housing markets because it will give people an opportunity to move downtown and experience the downtown lifestyle at an affordable cost. They will not be required to make the $20,000 or $30,000 outlay to purchase a project. I see the lights flashing, so I'll conclude this. But, you know, it comes down to what do you want and how bad do you want it? And for me, this is a project that I really, really want. We will not have, if we turn this down and turn this access down, when will we see another opportunity to clear up the blight that is right now the Boise site? This will bring jobs to the community. It will benefit members of the outlying areas, whether you live in Salem or not. If you come downtown, it will benefit everybody. There will be more opportunities for shopping. There'll be more opportunities for restaurants and what have you. So I urge you to approve this access. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming and testifying. Are there questions of Mr. Dorn?
I do have a question for Mr. Dorn.
All right, proceed, Counselor Tesler.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, Dan, I very much respect you, and you know that I have over the years. But, you know, I'm going to ask you this question, and it goes like this. You know, these have been tough times for you. These have been tough times for a lot of builders. But yet, you would never come down to the city and ask us for a tax break. And if you had access problems, you would figure them out yourself, which you have many, many times. So, you know, the whole thing about access, I don't understand how, I guess I just don't understand how this is going to solve the problem. And I just, I appreciate what you're saying to us, but I just, I don't see how these benefits are going to happen. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Was that a question?
Counselor Tesler, was that a question for Mr. Dorn? Did you want him to reply?
You know, I just...
We can't hear you.
I guess, no. It's too late, never mind.
All right, I guess.
That's because it's late.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Tesler. That was an easy one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dorn. Brent DeHart, followed by Allison Kelly.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello.
I've only got 15 minutes of testimony.
That's what you think.
Brent DeHart, out of Ward 7.
Welcome.
And thank you all for your service and your time and your late service. I listened to the amusement about the comments about rushing to judgments since we passed this waterfront overlay district and urban renewal district when I sat amongst you, which has now been over five years ago. We've been discussing the merits and demerits of the process. When it comes to easements, it really, it looks like they're looking at three different things. Is the appropriateness of the easements in public lands for private development? Is it safe enough and does the benefit outweigh the compromise you are giving up to give up 24 feet of your parkland to allow the easement, to the benefits of having Sperry renewal? Frankly, I think that easement is appropriate. I mean, we see easements through Skyline Park to get to Sprague. We see easements for the railroad to go down the middle of Front Street. We see easements to get to private buildings, Airport East land. So I don't think it's unusual. I don't think that's much of a concern. I'm more concerned about what I hear in a tone that we don't want these people, we don't want these apartment dwellers in our downtown. I found that disturbing. When it comes to safety, my kids went to Liberty Elementary, Crossler, and Sprague, and all have more unsafe drop-offs in a more condensed period of time. They didn't have a four-foot fence, the berm, a landscaping, a sidewalk, and a curb. It's amazing. Under this kind of safety concern, we would not approve Busch Park today because it's bordered on three sides by busy streets, and they're going to be constant. Everybody goes to the park, has to interact with traffic. I don't agree with the characterizations that this is unsafe. Give us some credit, as we're populists, that we can take our kids to the park and we can unload them. We do it all the time.
Give us some credit.
I raised my kids in this community.
Give the citizens some credit for wanting their parks to stay clean and open.
Sir, would you please not speak out?
I think we're lost at the people that live in the apartments are also citizens who want a clean and safe park. Last comment on the other topic is the benefit outweigh the compromise and will it spur renewal? This is urban renewal because we have blight. It's what it's designed for, folks. If we want mixed-use, private-dollar development leading to more tax revenue and more people living downtown and more activity, then we should say yes to this because sometimes the role is to be an enabler. The government doesn't have the money to eliminate the blight and renew. So the urban renewal's purpose is to enable the private sector to renew the area. I appreciate your consideration and all the time and thought you put into it, no matter how you fall on the issue.
Thank you. I believe we have a question. Counselor Dickey.
Well, thank you for coming down and staying so late. And glad to have you here because you've got some institutional knowledge along with a few colleagues who are here right now on the floor. And my question is something you didn't necessarily speak to regards the fire access part. So when you originally envisioned this area being redeveloped, do you have any thoughts about that? Had that ever come up, having to use Riverfront Park for emergency access? I haven't really heard that spoken to very much tonight. I am concerned a little bit about that and would like to know what your thoughts are on that.
I know that the site was always deemed as problematic because of the other side of the railroad tracks, and the access was going to be problematic, specifically having to do with fire safety. I don't remember specifically that coming up. We knew that if the creativity was called for and some compromises called for.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming and testifying and certainly did appreciate and still do the legacy that you left on this council and the number of years you spent here. I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Allison Kelly, is Allison still here? I thought I saw her leave. Did she have to leave? Okay. All right. Is there anyone else in the chambers that wanted to testify that has not? Because I know there were a few people who had signed up but did not come to testify. So cognizant of the fact that we're going to be closing down very quickly here. Yes, sir?
I didn't sign up, but I would like to say if you were.
And your name is?
My name is Duane Christensen. I live at 1352 Heather Lane Southeast. I worked for Department of Transportation for 35 years. I'm a registered civil and traffic engineer. I worked in design and ended up as assistant highway engineer in charge of all of the design sections in the highway department, traffic, bridge, roadway, right-of-way, environment, the whole bit.
Be sure you speak into the microphone.
My main concern is the point of access. My main concern is the point of access. And I think it's gonna be a disaster there. It's just waiting for an accident to happen. Most of the kids come into that, not on the north side, but on the east side. That's where the main entrance ends, is into that building. And there is an opportunity, I think, for you to go back to the Highway Department and either use the, go at the access that went under the structure, under the railroad, or at least move it to the south. I would say closing the existing accesses there now, move it to the south, where you can, the apartment traffic can go left, the people going into the park and the carousel can go right, and you eliminate that particular involvement. So at least look at that before you make a decision as to what you're gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right. Thank you very much. Welcome. State your name and address, please.
Chain Griggs. I live at 260 Washington Street South in Salem. I've lived here since 1977. I'm here to ask your support for that access through the park, actually around the park to be more accurate. I've read, I've listened to tonight's testimony by both sides. I'm confident. I'm a grandparent of a 17-month-old and would not hesitate to take that child to the carousel and feel very comfortable doing that. It's been stated earlier that without this access, this development will not occur. It is not quite yet the gem of downtown Salem, but it will be. And there are many benefits, including things that have already been mentioned about access to jobs, access for those apartment dwellers to be able to walk and bike to work. But we've already, you have already done a great job kind of spearing that development in downtown by supporting the new restaurants. You allow outside dining. We're gonna have that fabulous development on State and Liberty with the market. And the unique shopping on State and Court Street that you continue to support, and the Gallagher's Running Store on Commercial, is a key part of our downtown area. All of these businesses will continue to benefit from those folks that live in the apartments. But what we are lacking, what the City Council really does need to get behind, is affordable housing in this area. We've got high-end condominiums. We have high-end apartments down at the Meridian. But we don't have access for those that could live there and work at Corbin, Woolamette, Shamakata, just to name a few, and the Capitol. This development will also have an impact on the livability of Salem. I would imagine most employees would like to point to a very engaged, dynamic downtown area as an attraction, as a magnet for potential employees. And it would help retain those employees. And I think the Parker Park will be safer with this complex, and this is one point that hasn't been brought up tonight. As a runner and as a walker, I appreciate that downtown presence and folks that are in the park. That will increase with those apartment dwellers. It'll be more of a 24/7 presence. And I run at 4:30, which is five hours away in the morning. So, and then there's the reliance, or non-reliance on private transportation, being able to access the public transportation, biking and walking to work. I know this is a tough decision. It's obvious that I have friends in the audience who are on the other side of the fence from me on this one, as some of my council friends. But I think the risk of passing up this opportunity is strongly outweighed by the opportunity to take it up. So with that, I'll answer questions, and I appreciate your patience.
Questions? All right. None. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Yes, Mr. Sorum.
Good evening. Alan Sorum, 250 Church Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon. I'm just appearing only for the purpose of entering some documents in the record. Want to share a couple numbers with you relating to those. In response to some concerns that there wasn't enough demand for the project, in the last 72 hours, there was an attempt to gauge the support of this, and the applicant engaged affirm to go ahead and try and obtain some signatures for those who are willing to evidence their support of the project, and they were able to obtain 783 signatures through an online and in-person petition, and that is in the record. If you have any questions, I'm happy.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Britta France.
I wish...
Well, just a moment. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to extend.
I'll move. We extend for 15 minutes.
All right. It's been moved, seconded to extend for 15 minutes, and that's gonna be the last one. All right?
Last one. I wouldn't be short.
The motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
I wouldn't add myself on if I didn't listen all evening and waited for somebody to say what I'm going to tell you. And that is, you are building, we are building, Linda is helping us build, a $9.5 million bridge to 303 additional acres. If anybody believes that this will do nothing to your traffic, nothing to Salem's business, nothing to help downtown, then I think it was a futile job. It is opening up 300 acres. The park is only 22, and it has an adjacent bird refuge. And we're spending $9 million, which we're all aghast at, and then we forgot about it tonight? No one has mentioned the anticipated growth and the impact on selling and merchandising and traffic and parking, and the fact that we're going to need one of those modern new police little stations down near the park, and we're going to need first aid, and we're going to need bicycle repair, and we're going to need tourist information. If you don't think that this is going to change the city and the feeling of the park, plus we've got a bridge to the other side for population in West Salem, you don't think this is going to be an attraction. It does remind me that I gave you the wrong address. I did move this week. To Capitol Manor. It never says it's gonna be a heck of a mess coming into town on that. Yes, I had hoped somebody would say that to you, because growth and future is something you learn. Build it, and they will come. And I learned that in fashion. You didn't have anything downtown when we moved here. You had Meyer and Franks and Payless. The rest was all parking and old, dilapidated urban renewal quality buildings before they ever dreamed of up. And private money, thank you, built the building that attracted us here. So please, 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 understand the magnitude of your decision tonight and the opportunity to say to Larry, "Come on, Larry, we loved your plans for the real horrible thing on that Boise Cascade." And that is the building, which is built so sturdily to take trucks with rolls of paper. That building will never come down. It is an absolute impossibility to take it down. He drew wonderful pictures. I don't know how you switched him over there to come closer to the water, because that's where the urban blight is, that's where the money needs to be, that's where the investment is, that's where additional retail could go, that's where the opportunity to expand is, not to squish yourself in the last piece of available land to put all the new chains to park your bikes and put all the people in and blow whistles.
I need to remind you that your time is up. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Britta France? All right. Thank you very much. I believe, all right. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Keith Crispin. I live 34, 3734, Tunbridge Wells South. I'm the last one. I got 15 minutes?
No.
No.
Don't mock.
Okay.
I'm opposed to the access, and I'm gonna get in a lot of trouble for what I'm gonna We've got a great park, and it's been said tonight very graciously, a wonderful park over there. It's too important a park to be, to get an impact that is negative, and I feel this is. I'm an architect, retired. I appreciate the work that's gone into design. It's a beautiful building, series of buildings. It'll be important to the city of Salem. It's in the wrong place. This is what's forced this access problem. It's an awkward, the ax, I wanted to talk about the aesthetic impact of the building, but you won't let me, so I won't.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
There's gotta be a better way. There's gotta be a way. I'm amazed, thinking about this, that we've given up the argument of having an access somewhere else. There's an extra, the paper, the picture in the paper today is looking down toward the ball and where this project is. And it shows the access that has been there for years and years and years, that have been used by the semi-trailers. All the trucks for Boise Cascade have gone in there. There's still the access off the street, and that access may or may not be there, but it was about a 50-foot access. And what happened to that? We gave up on that argument. We caved in, and rules and regulations, I don't know where this all comes from, the state or the highway or the railroad department. That caused the problem. It amazes, it amazes me we've come this far in the design on this project without an access. I feel like we're being forced into this solution, which is not a good solution. I recommend, we have another way to approach this program, project, as has been said before. There's gotta be a better way. This is not it.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? Thank you very much. Jason Takarsky, did you want to speak?
Yes, please. Thank you. Jason Takarsky, Mountain West Investment Corporation. Thank you, Mayor and councilors, for the late night. I appreciate your service and being here this night and addressing these important issues. I want to briefly just address Counselor Bennett's questions about the market. We talked about that a little bit earlier today. I'd like an opportunity to just briefly readdress that. It was stated earlier by Jennifer Martin that occupancy for multifamily in the Salem area is sub-3%. That is the best indicator of demand for multifamily product. Typical market vacancies are 5%. When you're sub-5%, you know you have pent-up demand. How is pent-up demand further evidenced? We are building 102 units out at Orchard Ridge right now in West Salem. They have fully leased up in three months. We're building an additional 78 units. There's a 400-person waiting list. That's evidence of demand. The downtown product, though, is a little different than the suburban product. So we've talked to three different appraisal firms. We've talked to two property management firms. We've talked to one other local developer who is expert in apartment development, and we've talked with one local brokerage firm. And the consensus is consistent across the board. The market is healthy in downtown Salem for new apartment development. As if we needed more evidence, I'd like to cite one more thing, and that is the Meridian. Finally, after years, the Meridian is now open, with new apartment units renting. As of a month ago, they opened, they had an open house, bringing 85 units to the market. Today, they are 60% leased. I would say that is fantastic absorption and a wonderful demonstration of the need for housing of that kind in downtown Salem. I don't envy your position tonight. These are tough issues. Urban development is difficult, and with it comes these kinds of issues that we have to wrestle with. I share the concerns about access and about safety. We have taken those very seriously, and it's why we put together the team that we did. And I wholeheartedly believe in that team, and that they have adequately addressed these concerns, and that what we are proposing is safe. I urge you, councilors and mayor, tonight, to vote yes on this access issue. This will create the catalyst for further development of the Boise, the former Boise Cascade property, bringing vitality and vibrancy that is much needed to the downtown. Thank you.
Are there questions from councilors? I have a question. You've brought to the city a diagram and a proposal for a project, and I'd like you to tell us how much money or how much land you have offered to the city in trade for the land that you want for the driveway that will go from just after the entrance from State Street all the way along the side of the property to access to your private property. Just what is that figure, or how many square feet of land have you offered to us?
Well, I believe what was in the staff report was .8 acres of open spaces and the connectivity from Riverfront Park to the...
No, I'm talking about land that we would then own, not land that's in your apartment complex. I'm talking about land that you would trade and give to us. I remember a time when I was shown a diagram that allowed for 32 cars at the end of, at the south end of that property, excuse me, at the north end of that property.
North end.
South end of the area where the carousel is. That apparently just disappeared. And what you've done instead is to redesign our parking lot for the carousel to generously give us nine more parking spaces, so that we can, instead of being able to load and unload our cars and our vans and our children and our strollers, we're gonna have compact-sized spaces, which are not the norm in our parks. What is that dollar figure, and how many acres is it that you want to give us in trade for that driveway?
That currently is not on the table. There isn't a trade that we have discussed. You are correct, there was a point in time where we had another concept for the property that was still a multifamily use, and part of that meant that the city would get some additional parking spaces. As we continued to work through the financial feasibility of that project, how many units, what critical mass did we have to get to so that we had a financially viable project? It was readily apparent that we weren't going to be able to give very much land, that the 3.8 usable acres that exist there today needed to be developed as, to the greatest extent it possibly could, to create a financially feasible project. What we have done is offered a plan on redesigning the carousel parking lot, which it does expand the number of parking spaces available. We've also offered an area where the park's equipment will be, that will be reworked, so that their equipment can still be maintained on-site. And we've offered a portion, a small portion of our property, and I'm sorry, I don't have the exact square footage, that will become additional parking.
For how many vehicles?
I believe the total spaces where the new area is added is seven.
Seven spaces.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Takarsky? Okay. Thank you very much. I don't see anyone else signed up or standing to testify. Actually, are you standing there to testify?
Yes.
All right. Brian Moore.
Brian Moore, from Mountain West Investment Corporation, Director of Real Estate Development, 201 Ferry Street, Suite 400 in Salem. Most importantly, I'm a resident of Salem, and I've heard a lot of talk tonight about safety of children. I care a lot about the safety of children, and I am confident that what is proposed as far as access is very safe for children, and would be very comfortable taking my six, who are young, or my wife taking my six by herself even, without concern for their safety. I'd like to point out that the ULI study actually contemplated access through the carousel parking lot, and did so without even showing any modification to it whatsoever. And that that approval, or that that study contemplated development on this piece of property that totaled 2,400 trips a day. So the ULI study contemplated going through the carousel parking lot, no modifications for 2,400 trips a day. And the TIA, the Traffic Impact Analysis, that was approved by the city for such a development ultimately, approved that number. We're obviously much less than that. I think, Counselor Nanki, you were gonna ask a question about how do, how come we can't bring people from the slough? people from the slough, the slough parcel up to the park parcel? First of all, the approval that was given by the railroad was only given as approval for those parking spaces on the other side. It's limited in scope. So it would take another run at changing that specifically for apartments on the other side. Secondly, the only way to get there is to go through the commercial slash residential development on the south block. We do not believe that it would be feasible to, in a market perspective, to get people to drive through that route to get up to the park parcel apartments because of its circuitous nature, not to mention the significant cost of building a bridge to get there. So those are my thoughts.
Other questions for Mr. Moore? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move we extend for 10 minutes.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clausen to extend for 10 minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, I need to capture the no votes. The no votes were Counselor Dickey and Counselor Tesler. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move we continue the public hearing until the 9th of September, leaving the written record open.
All right. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to keep, to continue the public hearing until September 9th, keeping the record open.
Yes.
Did I say that correctly?
Yes. Is that?
For purposes of clarification, the public hearing of accepting testimony will be closed, and you'll only accept written testimony.
That's correct.
And continued deliberations on the 9th.
That's correct.
Questions of staff as well on the 9th.
We need, we want to leave open questions for staff. Okay? Exactly what Dan said.
Your motion covered it, Counselor.
All right. Let's repeat the motion, just so we're all very clear. Would you please, Dan?
You're going to close the hearing for testimony and continue it to September 9th for the purposes of deliberations and questions of staff.
Written testimony.
And written testimony, so it's just taking away oral testimony.
Okay? That's, that was.
All right. That's the motion. All right. Counselor Bennett has moved and Counselor Clausen has seconded. Is there further discussion on the motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Tesler seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right.
Yay.
Thank you.
Hope you listen to the ordinance bill.
All right. We have a few more. We have, I know many people are ready to leave now, but, and we're going to steam ahead, councilors. We're going to steam ahead, councilors, because I want to get through this and we all have homes to go to. So we have information, we have no unfinished business. We have three items of information reports in your binders. Draw your attention to those. And we have ordinances. Would the city recorder please introduce the first reading of Ordinance 8.1A?
Ordinance Bill Number 2813 relating to establishing a new chapter, SRC Chapter 71, Stormwater.
Thank you. And is there staff recommendation or simply make a motion? All right?
Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation for 8.1A.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move staff recommendation for Item 81A. Is there discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And the second reading, would the recorder please introduce that?
Yes, I'll do the second reading and take a real call vote. Ordinance Bill Number 2513 relating to the historic districts and the preservation of public historic resources, amending SRC 230.005, 230.020, and 230.085, creating new provisions and repealing SRC 230.060. Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you. The ordinance, motion carries. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
That was my turn. Thank you all.
Are you serious? No. All right. Thank you. No public comment, no new business, no mayor's items or counselor's items. We are adjourned. Thank you all.